The time is 6:01. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Do you have motion this evening?
We do. I would like to make a motion to approve the remote electronic attendance of Second Ward Alderman David Parker, Third Ward Alderman Mike Went, Sixth Ward Alderman Kevin Schoonmaker, Alderman Large Sonia Burgett, Committee of the Whole, and City Council meetings of March 30th, 2021.
Maybe second?
We're going to amend the motion to exclude Alderman Burgett because she said-
Oh, that's my fault. I'm sorry.
Sorry, Alderman. We have a motion. A motion by Alderman Moyer with protection seconded by Alderman Waldron. Roll call, please.
Alderman Waldron?
Aye.
Burgett?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays?
That motion carries. And we're beginning this evening. We have two oaths of office for-
Oh, one, sorry. Put them at the podium there.
Oh, perfect. Thank you.
Our first oath of office for promotional appointment, sorry, of Tony Lodi as Director of Utilities effective March 22nd, 2021.
Tony, have you spoken on my microphone? Please raise your right hand. I, Tony Lodi-
I, Tony Lodi-
Have been duly appointed to the position of Director of Utilities for the city of Moline, Illinois.
Having been duly appointed to the position of Director of Utilities for the city of Moline, Illinois.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the constitutions of the United States-
Do solemnly swear that I will support the constitutions of the United States-
And the state of Illinois.
And the state of Illinois.
Will strictly adhere to the Illinois rules of professional conduct-
Will strictly adhere to the Illinois rules of professional conduct-
And the Moline Code of Organizations.
And the Moline Code of Organizations.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the position of Director of Utilities-
And then I will faithfully discharge the duties of position of Director of Utilities-
For the city of Moline, Illinois.
For the city of Moline, Illinois.
According to the best-
According to the best of my ability.
Thank you so much.
Oh, it's over 8:30.
Who's that?
Over 8:30.
Oh, we do- Marty, are you going to take a picture?
Yeah.
Are we doing it?
No, I mean, he and the mayor. Oh, okay. I think he wants to do-
I think it comes down to the public art thing.
Exactly. We're nine-ish.
Oh, you're going to do that? You're kidding us. Ready? See if I lock it down.
I'm sure that's all we can do. Pass her up. Thank you. Thank you, Tony.
Your Honor, we have oath of office for appointment of Joe Kuhlberg to interim Director of Public Works effective March 22nd, 2021.
Please raise your right hand. I, Joe Kuhlberg-
I, Joe Kuhlberg-
Have been duly appointed to the position of interim Director of Public Works-
Have been duly appointed to the position of interim Director of Public Works-
For the city of Moline, Illinois.
For the city of Moline, Illinois.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the constitutions of the United States-
Do solemnly swear that I will support the constitutions of the United States-
And the state of Illinois.
And the state of Illinois.
Will strictly adhere to the Illinois rules of professional conduct-
Will strictly adhere to the Illinois rules of professional conduct-
And the Moline Code of Organizations.
And the Moline Code of Organizations.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the position of interim Director of Public Works-
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the position of interim Director of Public Works-
For the city of Moline, Illinois.
For the city of Moline, Illinois.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Thank you.
And now we have a proclamation from Junior Achievement of the Heartland to declare April 1st, 2021 as Junior Achievement Day, and we have Dougal Nelson here representing Junior Achievement.
Oh, do you want me to read it?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. No, no, no. Whereas the city of Moline will observe JA Day on April 1st, 2021 as an opportunity to recognize and celebrate Junior Achievement of the Heartland for empowering our young people to own their economic success. And whereas Junior Achievement of the Heartland's educational contribution equips our young people to become the next generation of productive employees and self-sufficient citizens to ensure the economic prosperity of Moline. Whereas it is fitting for parents, educators, businesses, and other members of the community to join in Junior Achievement's effort to ensure the future success and economic of our young people and the communities in which they live. Now therefore Stephanie Akry, Mayor of Moline, does hereby proclaim official recognition of April 1st, 2021 as Junior Achievement Day.
So as a past board member of JA, I have firsthand knowledge of how important the organization is and how important Dougal's leadership is for that organization. So I'd like to give Dougal an opportunity to address the council.
Thank you, Mayor Akry, and thank you, City Council, for just believing in Junior Achievement and allowing us to really empower our young people to be economically successful. You know, I think a lot of times we think about Junior Achievement and we think about our work in K through 12, and we're talking a lot about financial literacy and entrepreneurship and working career readiness. And really, you know, we see the fruits of our labor all through those 12 grades, but really where we see it the most is when those kiddos cross the graduation line, you know, and where are they at and where are they going to go? You know, many kids will go right into the workforce. There'll be some that go to college. Some may either government jobs in chief of police or chief of fire. You know, they may go to college. They may go to the military. Those are all great pathways, and that's where we're focused at. The last pathway that we want our kids to take is the pathway to your basement. Unfortunately, it's real, and we see it every day, but it's people like you. It's people that get it out in our community and get in front of our young people and show them. Listen, if I can do it, you can do it. So thank you for volunteering in the classroom. If you're not able to do that, we appreciate your financial support. I'm going to take a minute for a shameless plug. Tomorrow is the Day of Giving for Jersey Mike's over here in Moline, down by South Park. 100% of their door will go back to Junior Achievement that day. I'm going to be honest, over the last three years, Jersey Mike's has raised over $94,000 for Junior Achievement just out of the Quad City locations. So show up tomorrow, buy a sub, feed yourself, feed your friends, feed your family. All goes back to JA, and it will make a huge difference. So I just can't thank you enough. So on behalf of Junior Achievement and our board, thanks for everything you do for us. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Dougal.
Thank you, Mayor.
Have a good night.
The next item on our agenda is a presentation. It's the presentation of a proposed public art and placemaking plan led by Alexandra Elias Renew Moline. Alex?
Yes, thank you. I hope you all can hear me.
We can. Thank you.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to bring this plan to you. We started our process to develop a public art master plan a little over a year ago. We received funding from the Moline Foundation, and we worked closely with the city staff to start developing a steering committee. We came up with nine folks that were passionately interested in public art in both Moline and the Quad Cities, representing a diversity of interests and types of folks. Your representative on that steering committee was Alderman Moyer, and we were grateful for his participation. And we also have two of our other members here just to reflect to you today a little bit about that experience, and then we'll have a presentation from Amanda Golden. I do just want to mention a couple of things. One is that I sent you the plan and a series of questions and things that you could ponder about a week ago for this meeting. I hope you've had a chance to look at that. And then I also just wanted to mention that Designing Local and Amanda Golden, the principal of the firm, has been working with us for over a year now with our steering committee, with our nine-member steering committee. We did review a number of proposals that we gained from putting out a request for qualifications. And under the steering committee's guidance and direction, we did choose Designing Local, and we've been just so happy working with Amanda. So before Amanda does her presentation, I just want to introduce first Kevin Maynard with Quad City Arts will say just about his experience with public art and being on the steering committee, and then followed by Dave Harrell.
Excellent. Thanks, Alex. My name is Kevin Maynard. I'm the Executive Director of Quad City Arts. And there's obviously a lot that I could say about public art, but I want to be able to give Amanda as much time as possible, so I'll try to keep my comments brief. It has been a pleasure being part of the steering committee and working with Designing Local. It gave us an opportunity to dream big about the future of public art in the city of Moline. And Amanda has put together a public art master plan that is thorough as well as workable. And to be quite honest, if adopted, will mark Moline as a leader in public art in our region and really set the tone that the Quad Cities can be the arts hub of the Midwest. Public art helps drive tourism and is also becoming increasingly more important to people as they look at places to locate to. And that level of importance ranks higher with younger demographics. Locally, this ties in perfectly with our Q2030 initiative as public art creates a cool community and highlights creativity. It's also shown to increase civic pride, which is a key tenet of Q2030, as well as Visit Quad Cities strategic plan. Now, I would really like to thank the mayor and the council for taking the time to listen to this presentation as well as taking the time to review that plan as it really does show a commitment to both the arts and the future of the city of Moline. So thank you for that, and I will turn this over to Dave Harrell.
Thanks, Kevin. Hope everyone can hear me. Dave Harrell, President and CEO of Visit Quad Cities. And you know, Kevin hit the nail on the head, and it was such a pleasure being part of this process and a great honor for Visit Quad Cities and me to be connected to it. I do want to thank Mayor Akry and the council, including Alderman Moyer. You know, I think we had a lot of fun going through the process. I thought the dialogue was fantastic and robust and quite frankly was very inspiring. I think Kevin's comment about the city of Moline, you know, stepping out in a leadership role on public art, not only from the artistic opportunity that it presents, but I think in the public policy space and really being able to kind of, you know, shape this. And I do think it's something that will obviously add value, not only in economic development and tourism and the things that Kevin mentioned, but certainly for Molineers, Quad Citizens. I think people have an emotional connection to art and certainly public art as a forward face of their community. And so from a brand perspective, I think it can do so many different things as we think about how we want to evoke the characteristics of Moline, that authenticity of Moline, and certainly try to tell that authentic, you know, story. Amanda was definitely the right decision. I think she and her team guided this process in a really meaningful way, and I've been fortunate to be a part of a lot of these things. And Amanda knocked it out of the park on a lot of different levels. And, you know, selfishly, with the direction that you all had tonight and in the future, I want to stay connected to it because I just think it's such a great thing for our region and certainly the city of Moline. So I'm hopeful that at some point or some level, Visit Quad Cities will always be tethered to public art, and it's such a big piece of our strategy, our long-range goals, and our plans. So thank you so much for the opportunity just to share a little context with you. I do want to also recognize Alex for her leadership and her team, and Wendy. They're really good at what they do, and I'm so grateful that not only Renew, but the city is leading in this important conversation. So thanks for the opportunity to be with you tonight. And I'll turn it back over to Alex and Amanda. Thank you.
Amanda, you can take it away.
Thank you so much, Alex and Dave and Kevin. I really appreciate all of your kind words. And as I said, I have been honored to work with all of these folks on the steering committee and also all of you in really developing what I believe is a very thorough plan. As I've said in many of the meetings before, I am so proud to be presenting this plan to you tonight because I think we have had the most eyes on this plan that we have in quite some time of any of all of our clients. And all of the things that we're presenting to you today are right-sized for Moline, and they are right in that sweet spot of what the community wants and all of the things that you envision. So with that, I'm going to get started. So as Alex shared, we did kick this project off at the end of 2019. We planned a series of events that were planned for March and April. And as you know, we had to quickly pivot. But we were able to make a quick visit to Moline in January of 2020 where we had 20 individual stakeholder meetings. We had 10 community presentations that many of you participated in. And in April, we hosted a series of walkabout, talkabout workshops. And these workshops really focused on how public art fits in to public space. We asked the community to come and take a virtual walk with us around seven different sites. And those seven different sites were selected because they're varying in the site type. Some of them are, you know, overlooked spaces, so and underpasses. Some of them are streetscapes. Some of them are blank walls. We really provided a variation and a variety of sites to the public to consider how public art interventions might change those and make them better for the community. We had quite a few participants, and we had a lot of feedback, a lot of really fantastic feedback. And then, of course, we had our online survey, and we believe that we had 200 unique participants in all of those events combined. We learned a lot from those events, but the first thing I'd like to share with you are two projects. As I said, there are seven in the plan, but today I just want to share with you two that we think are really exciting and really fantastic and really give you a taste of what the conversation has been when it comes to thinking about public art and placemaking in downtown Moline. So the first project is what we're calling Leading Light. And this is located at the northeast corner of 12th and 4th, and as you know, is the designated location for the new passenger rail station. It's a 65,000-square-foot site, and it hosts a hotel, parking garage, and transit center called the Q Multimodal Station, and will be Moline and the Quad Cities' front door for people who are traveling from Chicago to the Quad Cities. We felt that public art could be placed in the grassy plaza area leading up to the transit station itself, but also the plaza. When we asked the community what they were specifically interested in and seeing here, we found that words, nature, and colors, lines, and shapes were something that was a top priority. We also asked the community to share with us what some of their considerations would be if they were to be sharing with an artist that was selected to create public art for this site. We heard overwhelmingly that scale has to be considered here. The connectivity has to be explored to the river, and that the peace should be lit. It shouldn't be something that we can only experience during the day. So as you know, in all of the projects that we're presenting, we provided a series of sample images that show what other sites and other places are doing and how they're integrating public art into similar places. The top image, you're seeing a piece in Juneau, Alaska. And the bottom two images, you're seeing something that's more interactive, a mirror labyrinth, and then on the right, a piece in Cleveland, which is really talking about First Amendment rights, right? So these are really wonderful pieces that are both lit, but are also taking place in large, open spaces. When we took all the considerations that the public offered, we decided that placing public art in front and on the grassy area leading up to the transit station was going to be our best bet for really making that big first impression. And then it was lit that people could come take their photos with. And really, when they step off the train or when they're staying in the hotel, we're excited to be near this piece of public art. I should note, too, that all of these conceptual images are just that. They're concepts. We, of course, want any artist that you select to be the ones who develop the concepts for the sites, but these are really just an opportunity for you to see how public art is integrated in some of these sites that are very familiar. The second project that I'd like to share with you today is what we're calling Shapes and Colors. One of the things that we did in our planning process was really pay attention to other investments you were already making and thought about how public art could fit into those investments in a really meaningful way. And of course, your 19th Street Bike Path that begins at 7th Avenue was a no-brainer for us to explore as an opportunity for public art. The entire corridor specifically, but we're going to talk about that intersection of 7th and 19th. So as you know, this is a new on-ramp and off-ramp for the new bridge, and it's heavily trafficked. As you can see, this is very much focused on car traffic. But with a new streetscape plan, we're shifting from focus on more vehicular traffic to a more pedestrian focus. And so what we are proposing, based on the community's feedback, is that we want to consider what pedestrian safety might look like. We want whatever is there to consider well-lit crossing opportunities for pedestrians. Creative crosswalks was thrown out often when we were talking about this location. And we just, we wanted to really think about how the pedestrian was going to experience this. So some sample images include some sculpture along the bike path and two different locations on the top. And then, of course, paint on pavement and concrete exploring how adding public art color vibrancy really does change what is otherwise necessary but possibly boring infrastructure. So we took a vantage point as a pedestrian crossing 7th over and crossing and going down 19th. So as you can see, we've got some creative crosswalks on both, or, you know, at these two different portions of the intersection. And then we also have some sculptural elements that go over what is going to be a shared-use path, and then some sculptural items that are lining the in-between spaces of the places that the sculpture is going over the sidewalk. One of the things that we thought was very important along this corridor, of course, this is leading you right to the river. We wanted this to be a place that people could explore at night as well and feel safe walking along this corridor. So these sculptures are lit, of course, to create some of that night interest. In addition to talking considerably about different sites and how public art could specifically impact public space, we talked a lot to the public and also to our steering committee about how public art would live in the city of Moline and in the Quad Cities. And based on all of the feedback that we received, the vision for the public art program in Moline is that it adds the dynamic creative ecosystem of the city and delivers high-impact public spaces that are elevating both the city and the Quad Cities nationwide. It's important to recognize the artistic and creative community that already lives here, and this program really will provide an opportunity for that to really be showcased and celebrated. As I shared before, we did provide a series of benchmark images of other communities and how they've integrated public art into their public spaces. But we don't want to just take what other places have done and implement them in Moline, right? So we want everything that is placed in Moline to be unique to you. We want people to come to Moline for the public art. And so we have developed a series of criteria for evaluation that your eventual commission will use when making decisions about which public art to implement. And I'm not going to read these all to you, but I do just kind of want to read the major points out loud because it is important that this is how your community sees public art living in Moline. And this is the criteria that they see as important when making decisions on how to spend money on public art. Overwhelmingly, we heard that public art in Moline should be bold and iconic. It should reflect that Midwestern charm that you all know and love so much. It should become synonymous with the city and the Quad Cities brand. Public art should connect us to one another. We're all coming out of this last year feeling a desire to be more connected to our neighbors and friends and family, and public art does this through creating comfortable and joyous public spaces. You know, thanks so much to Dave for participating in our steering committee and really making sure that we're considering the tourist who is coming to the Quad Cities. And the city of Moline and the people of Moline have said that, yes, we want to captivate those visitors, and we want that to be a draw for them, but we also want our public art to be for our locals. So how can we create things that are big and bold and awesome? But also, how can we create these little, these little investments, smaller investments that people in Moline will see regularly and will become part of why they love Moline so much? We want the public art to be a uniquely Quad Cities experience. Again, really thinking about how what you're bringing to Moline is unmatched anywhere else in the country. So that can be done through experiencing artists who are not doing tons of work across the country. It can be done through integrating it into specific sites. There are many ways that that can happen, but we really want to showcase what is so special about the Quad Cities. We want the artwork that comes to Moline to be diverse, both in the medium that you're bringing, but also in the people that are reflected in the public art itself and the artists who are creating the artwork. We want your collection to be diverse, and the artists who are contributing to your collection to be diverse so that all of the many cultures that exist in Moline can be celebrated and showcased through your collection. And then finally, we want to make sure that your public art really does celebrate the seasons. Oftentimes, we have folks who are very much nervous about the winter, but we know Moline embraces the winter. I dare say that you guys love the snow, maybe not love, but there is that wonder, and it is a part of your, a part of your brand, a part of who you are. So let's make sure that the public art is not only able to be experienced in that warm weather, but it's able to be experienced when it is cold and when there is snow on the ground. So in order to accomplish that vision that we talked about, which is really kind of becoming a beacon of creativity through investing in your public spaces, we have developed a series of cultural corridors that we're recommending to you tonight. And those cultural corridors were developed primarily through thinking about what other cultural assets exist along these corridors. So we have suggested that there be four corridors that are recommended as these cultural corridors, and those are 19th Street from 7th Avenue to the riverfront. Right? You already have that wonderful investment that's happening there. It's going to open up into the park there. You have a series of other cultural amenities that already exist. We have River Drive from 12th Street to 34th Street. Again, that river is such a special feature, an environmental feature specifically in Moline that really should be showcased, and what better way to do that than through public art? And then we've got 5th and 6th Avenue from 6th to 23rd, and then 12th Street from 6th Avenue to River Drive. These corridors do kind of draw a circle around downtown, and that is intentional. But it's also utilizing all of the potential private investment opportunities that we believe will be pursued in the future. And these cultural corridors will be used to drive investment. So what we want is for you all to invest along these cultural corridors, and some of the recommendations that we'll go over here in a second really do focus on these cultural corridors. But we want to protect early wins and early successes of the public art program through investment, strategic investment along these corridors. It's our intention that once these corridors are built out, per se, with public art, that you then would consider what it might mean to expand the program outside of downtown. So how are we going to achieve the vision? The first is to formally establish the Moline Public Art Program through an ordinance adopting this plan before you tonight and the public art policy that's found in the appendix of the plan that Alex sent you all. The policies in the document include the seating of the commission, which is a seven-member body that we're recommending that would help govern this program. These are people who are professionals in this field and have a design background, so they can really be your eyes and ears when it comes to public art. It's important that you all not be the people that are the final arbiters of public art. You have more important things to do, but this commission would really help you be able to make those decisions and would be making those decisions on behalf of you and making a recommendation to you. The next is a collection management policy. So once you begin to implement public art, how do you manage the pieces that you're collecting? Who takes care of them? How are they taken care of? How are they dedicated? What are the artists' rights? The next policy is a donation policy. So if someone has something they'd like to bring to the city to donate that is a piece of public art, how does the city begin to understand what that piece of public art may do? Is it going to be a major liability? Is it going to be a major liability, and how might you take care of it in the future? Or is it something that's going to be a major asset? And how do you determine that, and what is the commission's role in making that decision? And then finally, maintenance. One of the things we find is that people, specifically municipalities, are so excited about placing public art that maintenance is something that is forgotten. And that's unfortunate because these pieces of public art that are not meant to be burdensome on communities become quite burdensome once they, you know, sit in the weather outside for many, many winters. There is quite a considerable amount of maintenance, but the policy that we're recommending allows for that and plans for the maintenance of the pieces that you will be accessioning into your collection. The second strategy is to adopt funding mechanisms to provide dedicated, sustainable funding to the public art program. I hope that you have explored this section because it is very detailed. We are recommending that you adopt a multi-pronged approach that projects early success in the program. We are recommending an annual allocation budget of $100,000. And then because of the following recommendations that I'm going to lay out here, because those vary, we are asking that the annual budget allocation be consistent and the same number across many years because you'll see in the graph that I will click to on the next slide that those numbers vary because they are based on what the city is spending. So in addition to the annual budget allocation, we're recommending a percent for art and city capital improvement projects. So we're not talking about repaving roads or filling in potholes or repairing sidewalks. We are talking specifically about big projects like parks, streetscapes like 19th Street, the bike path. We're talking about major streetscape renovations that you may be doing. Anything that has above-ground components that is, you know, considered to be large, that's what we're recommending, that the city dedicate 2% of the project budget to public art within those projects. So that way, public art is beginning to be integrated and become part of the fabric of the city. And those are only for downtown projects. The next approach that we're recommending is a percent for art and private development on cultural corridors, right? So back to that slide where we proposed those four cultural corridors. We're anticipating a significant amount of private development in the future. And along those cultural corridors, we're recommending that private developers allocate 1% of the total project budget to public art. There is a $100,000 cap, and developers would have the option to either keep that 1% on their property, so keep the public art on their property, and those could be architectural elements that are designed by artists, whatever the developer can dream up, as long as an artist is completing the work. We are asking that you recommend to them that they spend 1% on public art. If developers are hesitant about doing that, they are welcome to contribute 80% of that total 1% to a public art fund at the city of Moline that the commission can then use to spend on public art downtown. The city would not be required to spend money on public art near that property, but of course, it would be downtown, so it is relatively close. I should also note that projects that are pursuing historic tax credits would be exempt from this requirement. The next is the expansion and use of facade improvement dollars for murals. We are recommending that any applicant who is already applying to the city for use of those improvement dollars can ask $4 to place a mural on a non-primary facade. Of course, the same process of approvals would apply to this, but the only difference would be that you would expand the allowance and use of funds for murals, and if that happened, that mural would go before the public art commission that is before you tonight. And then finally, you have such a generous community in the Quad Cities that we want to make sure that it's allowable for grants. But as you know, grant money is hard to get, and grant money for art is even harder. And doing this plan is a big step in the right direction because those philanthropic organizations are seeing that you have a commitment to excellence, you have a commitment to strong governance, diverse governance, and making sure that the community has a voice. And so presenting this plan is something that would be a little bit more appetizing to those vendors. And so we've developed a funding graph to show here. The dark blue bottom really represents the consistent funding that we're asking the city to fund, and that is that $100,000. And as you can see, the orange portion, which is the grants, vary from year to year because grants are not consistent, the availability of those dollars is not a consistent availability. The green is that private development portion, right? So that, again, is all based on how much private development is happening along those cultural corridors. And that, again, is a 1% requirement by developers to place public art on their property. And then, of course, they could determine that they want to place 80% of the 1% in a fund that the city of Moline would manage. And then finally, the blue, the light blue on top, is the capital improvement projects that are the city-funded projects. And those vary again, so, you know, in the first year, we may see just, you know, $25,000, second year, maybe 10, right? That varies because it's based on what the city is already spending. And what we would hope would be that this program would be so successful that in a couple of years, you would expand this to outside of downtown because the rest of the city would say, hey, what about us? We really want to see public art in our neighborhood park or in our commercial center. And we would hope that you would be able and would be happy to use the policies that would already be adopted to kind of continue to manage the program and run the program. And with that, I would like to open the floor for questions.
Do any of the aldermen have any questions? I don't, I don't think we have any questions from the floor, Amanda, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, Alderman Skidmaker.
What were the number of public that were involved in the meeting? You said you drew some public into things. How many people were involved in that?
We believe we had 200 unique individuals that participated in that. So of course, we have some overlap with folks who may have participated in the survey or maybe a focus group, but we believe we had 200 unique individuals.
Good representation. More than I, more than I would have expected. It's good to hear. Why did you, I know, I heard you say that those who are using historic tax credits would be exempt. What was the reasoning behind that?
That's a great question. As we all know, doing a historic tax credit and rehabbing buildings back to the Secretary of Interior Standards is not an affordable process, and that's why the tax credit exists, to offset those costs. And so we want to honor the developers who are using that program and who are restoring and rehabbing buildings back to that standard and not require them to do something else that would require an extra expenditure.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? Alderman Went.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, I had talked to Alderman Skidmaker's question about those historic buildings. Yeah, obviously, we want those older buildings to be rehabbed. We don't want to put up any impediments, but it doesn't prevent us from still, as part of it, because most of those also have development agreements, that we can still include some kind of art component if, through the DBMT or through that process, we find that there makes sense. They may be, you know, a corner of, between two streets, or maybe the facade, or a mural on the side, or those sorts of things. We can still absolutely incorporate it. It's nothing that prevents us. It's just, this gives us a little bit more flexibility in those really difficult projects where we wouldn't want it to get, you know, undone or not happen because of the, just because of the art component. And while I've got the floor, I just want to thank everybody who worked on this, the team. Has been wonderful. Amanda, Alex, and no, that whole group, you guys have done a wonderful job. And I really think that this is something that is going to leave its mark on the city of Moline for generations. And so thank you very much for your hard work on this and looking forward to supporting it.
Alderman Parker.
Thank you. So Amanda, you mentioned that the Art Committee, the Art Commission, would be made up of individuals that obviously are, this is what they do. But you also mentioned that you didn't think that anyone from, no elected, no elected official should be on that. And I just wonder the thought process behind that. And I'll tell you what my thought process is, is if every time we have an elected official on one of these boards, they can then bring back some of the concerns that we don't necessarily see or, you know, kind of give us a little peek under the tent as to what's coming our way, and then we can more effectively communicate that to our constituents. So is there a reason why you didn't want to have an elected official on there, or recommended that we not have an elected official on there or not? I mean, I just don't see, I don't see it.
Alderman Parker, I may have misspoken. We actually are recommending that the mayor or her appointee serve as an ex officio member on that commission to do just exactly as you shared.
Great, thank you very much. I must have missed that. You probably did say it. I must have missed it.
Are there any other comments or questions? Alex, did you have anything else you wanted to share?
Mayor, I just wanted to thank the city staff and elected officials that did participate in our, in our process. We did have a robust public review, and I'm really grateful for our partnership with the city and with the Moline Foundation that allowed us to get this time. So thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you so much. Thank you for all the information. We appreciate it.
Your Honor.
Yes.
I believe we have Craig Mack from the Plan Commission. I just want to make sure he doesn't have something to say.
Yeah. Hi, Craig, did you want to make a comment or share something with the council? Maybe not.
We also have Mike McNeil from the Facade Committee, and I want to make sure that he has an opportunity.
Mike McNeil, did you have a comment that you'd like to share with the council?
Yes, thank you very much. I appreciate the time to speak on behalf of the Facade Improvement Committee. I'm an architect and a member of the Facade Improvement Committee. And some of the other people that couldn't join us tonight wanted me to kind of give you an overview of what we do. For those of you who are not familiar, we, we work with the facades and do a lot of the infrastructure work in trying to make improvements and help owners of buildings improve their facades and kind of bring them back to life in situations where maybe they've been, you know, undermined, you know, as far as aesthetic appeal. And we also work with them to help improve the brick-and-mortar portions of these projects, you know, the structural and, you know, adding, adding interest to the facades and things like that. So I did hear, you know, mention that there would be some combination of potentially including murals in to the Facade Improvement Committee. And we have a, we have a limited amount of funding that we're able to work with every year. And we, we try and get as many people interested in improving our facades throughout the downtown area. And we've also expanded up to the Avenue of the Cities, too. So, and we've had great success with this over the years. So, you know, I feel, you know, very excited about the art and introduction of this into the community. I think this is going to be a great thing, but we want to still be able to maintain our, our buildings and the brick-and-mortar portions of these buildings within our community so that we have, you know, a good cross-section of historic nature and new construction that, or additional construction to existing facades that would improve the aesthetic value of the downtown area.
Thank you, Mike. Anybody else on this topic? Thank you so much, everyone. Do we have any questions on the agenda this evening?
Your Honor, I just want to make sure that you knew that there is an update that will be presented by Director of Utilities, Tony.
Thank you. With that, we will begin with our agenda items. The first item is the FF-CRA Benefit Extension. Leah Miller, the interim Human Resources Manager, will be presenting. Hi, Leah.
Hi, thank you, Mary. Great, Council. This item is for a voluntary extension of paid leave benefits under the Families First Coronavirus Act that will include response, emergency responders as previously approved from April 1st, 2021 through September 30th, 2021. In addition to the previous benefits, under this new American Rescue Plan, benefits also now include employees that are obtaining a COVID vaccination, employees suffering from or recovering from the side effects of a vaccination, employees seeking or waiting for results of a COVID test if they have exposure or an employer requested test. As of April, all employees would be entitled to up to 80 hours, regardless if they had already accepted or used the voluntary FF-CRA previously. As mentioned, it would expire on September 30th, and employees are not eligible for any type of payout of unused leave. And staff recommends approval.
Motion approved.
Second.
We have a motion of support from Alderman Berg and a second from Alderman Moyer. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Alderman Waldron.
Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Potter.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
Skidmaker.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Leah. The next item will be presented by KJ Whitley, Community Development Program Manager. It's the 2019 Annual Action Plan Substantial Amendment III.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you guys hear me okay?
We can, thank you.
Thank you. Well, the Community and Economic Development Department is requesting approval of the 2019 Annual Action Plan Substantial Amendment Number Three. As a CDBG entitlement community, we were awarded $268,780 under the CARES Act. This is additional funding to respond to, prepare for, and prevent the COVID-19 pandemic. The proposed amendment includes modification of three existing COVID-19 programs, including small business loans, food supplement program, and administration costs. We published this amendment in the newspaper. We had a five-day comment period as required by the CARES Act funding. No public comments were received, and then our Citizens Advisory Board has approved the activities in the plan. And we're asking for approval, and we're also asking for consideration.
Motion approved. Parker. A second, Went.
We have a motion by Alderman Parker and a second by Alderman Went. Alderman Went.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you very much, KJ, for your leadership with this, this program. It's bringing much-needed help to many of our residents. And I really want to thank you from what was originally on the agenda two weeks ago till now, your hard work diligence to reducing the administrative costs by nearly $64,000 and being able to transition that into actual help, additional help for our small business assistance and for the food supplement program. And so I appreciate that shifting of those funds from the administrative line to money that's actually going to get in the hands of our residents and those that need it most. So thank you very much, and I look forward to supporting this.
Thank you, Alderman Went. And with that being said, as far as the business loans, we are proposing for this round, which would be our sixth round. Today, we just introduced our fifth round, but these funds will be for a sixth round, and they would be 22 $10,000 forgivable loans for minority woman business owners, disabled, and veteran owners. They would receive more points in the scoring mechanism.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Alderman Waldron.
Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Potter.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
Skidmaker.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item, it will be presented by Sarah Mark, the Fleet and Facilities Manager. It's the utility vehicle purchase. Sarah?
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Your Honor, and good evening. To preface, the following purchase that I'm going to be, purchases plural, that I'll be making this evening, we have not received any trade-in values yet. So staff is planning to request trade-in for each of the items that we're planning to replace, but will attempt to sell them prior to see if we might be able to get a higher return. While some items that I'm going to be recommending may show over budget... While some items that I'm going to be recommending may show over budget, I've been keeping a current running total and as of right now, everything that we will be recommending, we're under budget by about $53,000. So, with that said, the first of my many requests tonight will be for mowers and utility vehicles. Staff is seeking to replace three mowers and two utility vehicles. This purchase will include two zero turns, excuse me, one commercial out front mower, a utility vehicle for Riverside Cemetery, and a utility vehicle with a plow setup for South Slope. Each of these pieces of equipment have exhausted their reliable useful lives and have been budgeted for and been on the replacement schedule for anywhere between 2018 and 2020. Repairs at this point are more costly than anticipated returns and staff recommends approval.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Waldron, a second by Alderman Potter. Is there any discussion on this item? Roll call please.
Alderman Waldron.
Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Potter.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
Schoolmaker.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion carries. The next item is the Ford Escape SUV Purchase.
Thank you, Your Honor. There's a little clarification on this one. The way that it was written, there was some confusion on my part. The way we have it, it shows that staff is recommending a joint purchase, but we actually are going to be going in the opposite direction. So, we are going to be replacing three Ford Fusion hybrids that, excuse me, exhausted their reliable useful lives and have been budgeted for. They've been on the replacement schedule since 2020. The Fusion is no longer in production, but staff has identified that the Escape platform will be an acceptable replacement with added versatility. They can be purchased on a joint purchase contract. However, staff reached out to a local dealership here in Moline and for a slightly higher cost of $265 per vehicle, we would be able to keep our tax dollars here in Moline. Staff recommends approval.
Motion approved.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Alderman Berg and a second by, was it Alderman Went? Alderman?
Yes, Your Honor.
Alderman Went. And just for clarification, the recommendation is to buy it locally.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Any discussion on this item? Alderman Went?
Sarah, I, I just want to thank you. I know we emailed back and forth. One, thanks for responding to my email over the weekend. You didn't have to do that, but thank you very much for taking this and moving to this, this level of reaching out to our local businesses and, and partners and residents. And if there is a way that we can continue to spend our tax dollars wisely, but keep them local, I love that. I know that that's something that this council had asked for, for, for many years and I think this may have been one of the first times that it actually wound up resulting in a, in a local buy like this. So, thank you very much for your diligence and making this happen.
Thank you, Sarah. Anything else? Roll call please.
Alderman Waldron.
Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Potter.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
Schoolmaker.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion carries. Next item, item number five, solar electric aero board trailer purchase.
Thank you. Next up are four aero boards that we're looking to purchase for traffic control. Originally on the replacement schedule, it showed that we had three that were needing to be replaced since 2013, although I did find that there were originally four and one had been damaged beyond repair by a vehicle several years ago. After finding the replacements available on a joint purchase contract through Omnia Partners, we were able to replace, will be able to replace four with the budgeted amount that we had for three. Two of those will be utilized by the Utilities Department and the other two will be used for street maintenance and staff recommends approval.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Berg, a second by Alderman Moyer. Is there any discussion on this item? Roll call please.
Alderman Waldron.
Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Potter.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
Schoolmaker.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion carries. The next item is item number six, Ford F-250 Purchase.
This is another one that I'll be recommending the opposite of what it shows. So, staff is requesting to purchase two new F-250 pickup trucks. In Parks Maintenance, they had two trucks that were scheduled for replacement between 2014 and 2017 and were on the schedule for last year. Currently, the Police Department has a 2019 F-250 that was purchased for their Traffic Investigations Unit that is a super cab, but they could really use a bigger vehicle that's got four doors on it. After some discussions, staff has found that by transferring the unit that is in the Police Department to the Parks Division, it will be beneficial for both. The 250 from the PD can be put into our snow plan because it's got four-wheel drive and will allow the transport of more employees to job sites. That would open us up to purchase a new vehicle for the Police Department that will be better suited for their needs. Additionally, the other truck that is due for replacement in Parks will also be a crew cab and will be set up to plow. Staff found these trucks available on a joint purchase contract. However, again, we reached out to Sexton Ford and even since this was published, they have worked with me and the cost difference is going to be $775 higher cumulatively for both vehicles. So, staff is recommending that we go with Sexton Ford and keep our money in Moline.
So moved.
Second, Went.
We have a motion by Alderman Berg, a second by Alderman Went. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none, roll call please.
Alderman Waldron.
Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Potter.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
Schoolmaker.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion carries. Item number seven, Western V Plow Purchase.
Thank you. Staff is recommending to purchase two new V-style plows for the front of the two F-250s we just spoke about. These V plows can be used either straight or pitched, which will allow for better control over where the snow is deposited and is ideal for narrow streets and parking lots. These are available on a Sourcewell joint purchase contract and staff recommends approval.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Williams and a second by Alderman Moyer. Is there any discussion on this item? Alderman Berg.
I have a question. So, we, these are purchased out of town, correct?
Yes, these ones would be purchased out of town.
Is there not a reason why, is there no one locally?
There is somebody locally, but they came in much higher.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Roll call please.
Alderman Waldron.
Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Potter.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
Schoolmaker.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion carries. Item number eight, 2021 Swap Loader Hooklift Purchase.
Thank you. This purchase is going to go hand in hand with the following. This is going to be a request for seven new, excuse me, for the purchase of the seven new Class 8 trucks that I'll be asking for in the next item. We are looking to replace five of the Swap Loader Hooklift Systems for those trucks. These trucks are utilized to their full potential by being equipped with a hook lift system that allows them to be a leaf truck one minute and a salt spreader the next. The hook lift allows us to use one truck for multiple applications. Staff is able to purchase the Swap Loader Hooklift Systems at a dealer price and recommends replacing the systems for the proposed trucks. I did reach out and get a quote on refurbishment. Did come in much lower, however, they did advise that if any parts needed to be replaced, that number could increase rapidly. So, staff is recommending to replace rather than, excuse me, refurbish and we're recommending approval.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion by Alderman Waldron, a second by Alderman Berg. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none, roll call please.
Alderman Waldron.
Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Potter.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
Schoolmaker.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion carries. The next item is item number nine, 2021 Class 7 and 8 Truck Purchase.
Thank you. This purchase is to request replacing four single axle and three tandem axle Class 8 cabin chassis with complete hydraulic systems. These trucks, as stated previously, are heavily utilized on vital pieces of equipment. In addition to the five trucks that will have Swap Loader Hooklift Systems, there will be two trucks equipped with dump bodies for the Utilities Department. These trucks are used every day and we're on the replacement schedule in 2020. They are available on a Sourcewell joint purchase contract and staff is recommending approval.
So moved.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Waldron, a second by Alderman Moyer. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none, roll call please.
Alderman Waldron.
Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Potter.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
Schoolmaker.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion carries. Item number 10, Declaration of Surplus Vehicles.
Thank you. I'm not asking to buy anything here. Staff is recommending that the council declare van number 605 a surplus. It was on the replacement schedule in 2020, but it has needed repairs that are going to be higher than the anticipated return. We were able to repurpose one of the 2013 police interceptors for that application, which is going to extend the life there. So, it won't need to be replaced until about 2024 now. Staff recommends approval.
Move to approve. Went. Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Went, by, oh, sorry, we have a motion by Alderman Went, a second by Alderman Moyer. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none, roll call please.
Alderman Waldron.
Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Potter.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
Schoolmaker.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion carries. Now, we have item number 11. This is a hiring item, mechanic two.
Thank you very much. Finally, tonight, staff is requesting an exception to the hiring moratorium to hire a mechanic two. Council has allowed me to fill vacant positions and in, as anticipated, I did receive retirement papers for a mechanic two position in the last few weeks. Staff is still in the hiring process for the other vacant positions that you've so graciously allowed me, but this will be the final position needing to be filled in order to be fully staffed. Staff recommends approval.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Berg, a second by Alderman Moyer. Is there any discussion on this item? Sarah, I have a question for you.
Yes.
Do you have a sense of how long it would take to fill this position once you have our approval?
Well, it would go to council in two weeks and then we would do the requisition. I'm guessing maybe a month and a half, four to six weeks. Leah, do you think that sounds about right? Okay, at the farthest then, yes.
And that works for you?
It does. So, his last physical day in the building will be April 23rd and then his last actual day as an employee, I believe, is May 16th. So, we can set the start date until after that final date.
Okay, great. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Roll call please.
Alderman Waldron.
Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Potter.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
Schoolmaker.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Sarah. The next item will be presented by Joe Kuhl and Beck, our interim director of Public Works. It's a hiring item, Resident Construction Inspector. Joe?
Thank you, Your Honor, Council. Tonight, the Engineering Department is requesting the exception to the hiring moratorium to hire our Resident Construction Inspector. Our previous Resident Construction Inspector had taken the early retirement offer late last year and, and this is a position that kind of fills our hierarchy in our, in our engineering tech positions. We, we have a quick, quick synopsis of our three. We have tech ones that are lower leveled and our tech twos and then our resident construction really focuses on our federally and state-funded projects. They, they take our, our biggest projects that we need to cross the most t's, dot the most i's to ensure, ensure compliance with our, the money we're getting in grants and, and staff is recommending approval of the hiring of this position.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Waldron and a second by Alderman Williams. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none, roll call please.
Alderman Waldron.
Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Potter.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
Schoolmaker.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion carries. Thank you. The next item is also Joe's. It's the Complete Streets Policy.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is a policy that staff and some community members have been working pretty hard on for quite a while. We got it on this agenda just because I wanted to get it in front of you before we get too far into future CIP plantings and additional things I'll be coming to, to you with here in the near future. A lot of items on here tonight, so I'll try to keep it quick. Uh, we got this out to you. It's a, uh, the complete streets is a, it's a policy. It's, it's, it's more of a, it's more of a concept of how we are gonna manage and, and construct our streets within our city as we rebuild, build and, uh, and change what we do. Couple of slides here that I've, uh, used in a, from a presentation that was given to us at the very beginning of our, of our endeavor on this, uh, into this policy. Um, complete streets is, uh, like I said, it's a, it's a, it's an idea that, uh, streets can be safe, crossed safely, traveled upon and alongside by all users. Pedestrians, bicyclists, also our, our vehicular traffic, our bus systems, you know, we, we want to make sure that it's, it's conducive for everybody. Um, but it's not a, it's not an old school look at, uh, engineering in our roadways anymore. It's a, it's a, it's a look at it through a, a concept that, that has many benefits to it. So that's what complete streets is. That's the policy that's before you. It's our first step in that, uh, in, in, in that, um, mindset. Um, these, these policies can help us achieve, achieve, uh, several things. We can, uh, you know, this policy gives us opportunities to measure our success. One of the things I liked about the policy we came up with is, is that staff is gonna come to you within three months of the, of the adoption of this and then annually to, to explain where we applied this, what we were able to do, the benefits of it, and maybe also where we couldn't apply it and why we may not have been able to apply it at that, at that location. It's going to, it's gonna help us prioritize, prioritize our funding, uh, vet and improve our projects and, uh, and really define exceptions to where it may or may not work. Um, we have lots of opportunities and, and ways to achieve this. It is, it can be new construction, uh, new developments that come to town, uh, you know, if we, if we, if we have redevelopments of areas, uh, there, you know, we're gonna require our developers to look at the, the roadways that they put in, that they, that they meet all these criteria. Um, any of our new construction or reconstruction, um, any, any, any chances we have with utility work, uh, to repair the pavement on top. Really, really what we do in our CIP, we're gonna look at those projects through this lens at every stage. And thi- this is a, this is a ten element of a good policy. Um, we tried to touch on most of these and, or all of them in our policy in some way or another. Um, we want that vision, you know, and that vision is, in, in this policy may take several years or longer to, to work with and we're gonna need to work with our community to get to that vision so we know where we wanna be. There are some great plans out there. Uh, and they're a hundred pages, you know, so it's, it's one of those things that there, there's been a lot of time and effort put into some of these, uh, ideas and concepts. Uh, we wanna know who our users are. Uh, we wanna apply to all of the phases in our construction, our reconstructions, our CIP, our maintenance and our new developers that come to town. We also do wanna give those exceptions in there and, and, and it's not gonna work for every situation, but, uh, you know, we need to look at it in those anyway. It's gonna give us, uh, opportunity to work with all of our agencies, all of our departments within the city are gonna have some responsibility to look at these, you know, we're gonna have to talk with police and fire. We're gonna talk with our community development, our long-term plans, uh, council goals. All those things are gonna be vetted through this, uh, through the way we look at our street construction and our infrastructure going forward. And then implementation. Again, it's, it's, it's up to us to, to take these concepts and these ideas, implement them in our designs and, and show, show the benefits to the community and to the council what these are gonna look like. That's really the end of my presentation. I, if you guys had any questions on the policy, uh, in particular, I'd be happy to answer those, um, at this time.
Move, move to approve the policy. Went?
Go ahead. Can you say that again, Mike? I'm sorry.
Uh, m- move to approve the adoption of the policy.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Alderman Went and a second by Alderman Moyer. Any discussion? Alderman Went?
Well, I, I want to thank, uh, Joe and Laura for their hard work and, and Sam, who is, who is sitting on it as well, as well as uh, the, uh, the other staff that has, uh, helped through this, this process. Uh, this is a true, uh, game changer on how we approach, um, our, our streets, our bikeways, our sidewalks within our, our town. Um, uh, you look back ten years ago and, uh, at the time Alderman, or, uh, Mayor Worvort worked really hard on a bikeways plan. Uh, it was adopted. It was the policy of the city and unfortunately it went nowhere. The, the, for whatever reason, uh, it was never implemented through the engineering, through, uh, the CIP or, or those sorts of things. We are now at a place with the staff that we have in place where they take the direction of the council, the policy that we're, we're adopting and, and moving forward. And I know by putting this, uh, uh, this policy in place, um, it's, it's detailed, it's specific, it, it's measurable. Uh, it is going to have all the elements that is going to get implemented and I know Joe and Laura, uh, they've already shown, uh, great forethought that it's gonna make our streets safer. Uh, it's gonna be safer for our pedestrians, for our bicyclists, uh, family-friendly, um, and gonna make us a, a real jewel in the Quad Cities for, uh, for, uh, uh, people that want to bike and, and get around in alternative modes of, uh, transportation. So thank you so much for your hard work on this and, um, uh, looking forward to, uh, supporting it.
Alderman Potter?
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, uh, I echo all those comments. I think this is a great program. I'm, I'm really looking forward to, uh, how this, uh, is implemented. Um, I do have one question in, in regard to performance measure. We talked about the number of new curb ramps installed and, and, uh, right-of-way. Um, previously, we had gone into some areas and put in curb ramps and then left, uh, sidewalks that were impassable. Are, are we gonna include um, sidewalk, uh, uh, upgrades in those areas to make sure that if we're putting a curb ramp in, sidewalk is usable? Usable?
Yeah, you know, I mean, that, that's a, that's a, that's a great idea. We do have our sidewalk programs. Unfortunately, I mean, they're not connected always. You know, the curb ramps and the, uh, the sidewalk there behind may not always have, be in, in the same project scope of work or, um, or connected for any other reason besides we're getting that, that cross ramp done. It's a great idea. I mean, that, that makes a lot of sense, obviously, to, when we're investing into that area to, to utilize those as part of our sidewalk program. We have, we have more sidewalks on our list than we can do in, in any one year typically. Um, and, and those, those are requests from, from residents typically and, and we do the seventy-five, twenty-five program, so those get bumped and, and that tries to stretch our dollars a little bit. But, uh, uh, that, that'd be a great measurable as well to, to continue those. I don't know if you go, I don't know if you go the whole block or is the measurable ten, twenty feet, you know, where, where do we stop there? But that's a, that's a great, that's a good idea.
Thank you.
Alderman Moyer.
I guess I should just echo Alderman Went's comments as well and just say it's been a real pleasure to work with Laura Clower and Joe and, and Sergeant Russell and everybody else in that committee. There's a diverse committee there. There's uh, representatives from MetroLink, the schools, um, like you mentioned, traffic, um, and, and, and others as well, cyclists and so forth. And so it's, it's really great to talk about some of the, uh, issues that come up in the design of a, of an engineering project and I think this is just gonna really set our city ahead and provide some real value to the residents. Um, like I say, they're great to work with.
Great. Alderman Parker?
Thank you. Um, a couple of things I, I wanted to ask Joe probably, and actually anybody can weigh in that might be, um, have a little more information. But, um, Joe, I've asked for, I think it's been on the council for eight years and I think this is the eighth year I've asked, um, are we going to be doing any sidewalk grinding for the sidewalks that have heaved up in the older neighborhoods? Um, instead of, you know, just having to replace them. Um, every year I've been told we have the machine and I've yet to see it be put to use.
I knew it was brought up a few months ago. I did look into it. We have a small grinding machine, the way I understand it. Uh, one of our, some of our, our folks had gone out and, and used it. It's not very conducive to grinding large areas or large indifference in sidewalk. We got big elevation changes. I don't think it's, uh, designed to take it an inch down to acceptable level where maybe it would take a half inch to a quarter inch, you know, so it's not maybe usable in all those applications. Typically, when we're replacing the sidewalk, it's because it is in need of a replacement. Like I said, we have more, more areas of need in that program than we have funds to, to get to. I, I will look into that again and if it's a tool that we can use, depending on the circumstance, absolutely we would, uh, but I, I, the way I, the way I understood it when I talked to your staff after you mentioned it last time is that we, we're not able to utilize that, that tool that we have i- in the aspect that I think, uh,
Do you, Joe, do you think we have the right grinder? I mean, quarter inch doesn't seem like that's much when you're talking about a sidewalk. I mean, that's hardly anything.
You know, sidewalk grinding is, grinding machines could eventually take it down, but it's, it's the time to get, you know, it, it's only gonna eat so much concrete at a time. Uh, grinders are, are for unevenness as much as, you know, small, like you said, like you said, the quarter inch, but some of the trip hazards we have are in excess of an inch or more, you know, sometimes you can see the, of the pavement. I mean, obviously we can't grind those, but, uh, you know, we're all the way in between. So, uh, again, when, when it gets to, gets to the level where we're up there to replace it, it's typically in need of replacement. Um, if there are small areas, especially maybe in our downtowns where, uh, you know, we wanna utilize that tool to, to make those transition, transitions a little bit, uh, a little bit smoother where there's a lot, a lot of high traffic, that would be, that would be more probably an ideal situation for that tool.
Okay. So, you know, it's basically that, it, you know, not, not putting words in your mouth, but I mean, it's a real specialized tool that isn't gonna be able to be used and you know, I'm thinking of it on some of our older neighborhoods, Twelfth Street. I mean, we have sidewalks that are heaved multiple inches and I'm guessing that wouldn't work there.
No, that, no, it wouldn't. For one, it would take it down to nothing, you know, we would cut the concrete. Now, we're talking a four-inch concrete slab typically, so much more than an inch we take from that, we're taking away seventy-five percent of what's left. Uh, or seventy-five percent of what's left, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, my second question is how does the complete streets, um, marry with the traffic committee? Um, you know, because there, there were some overlap. I've kinda talked with Mike Went about, um, you know, traffic calming and things like that. And I think he was taking that through the, the, uh, complete streets group. Um, I just was wondering how, you know, somebody that's not intimately, um, understanding how complete streets work, where's the handoff? Where's the break between it goes to complete streets or it goes to the traffic committee? And I'm hoping most of this stuff goes to complete streets based on my success at the traffic committee.
You know, I think it's gonna go, it, it's probably gonna go both directions sometimes. Uh, when we get a, uh, a request to install stop signs or, you know, somebody speeding, you know, too many, too much traffic and too, too much speed on a residential road. And they want us to calm traffic there, wh- with whatever, whatever way we, we may be able to do it. It'll, it'll be vested through the complete streets policy, okay? So there's some criteria laid out in the complete streets policy that would allow us to look at these different options as far as traffic calming goes. If, if the complete streets, um, committee and the traffic committee combine, I mean, they're, they're kind of referenced together, uh, decide to pass it on either to the other committee or back and forth, that's going to, uh, it, it, it's written in the policy like how, how that's going to work. It's, it, it is gonna be based on some criteria. If, if, uh, you're only getting two hundred roads daily down, down a residential road and it's, it's not really conducive for any other traffic calming measures, it may not go anywhere. But if it's a, if it's a question of speeding on, on roads that are, that are, that obviously have extra traffic and, and cars do, do go quickly through that, uh, corridor, the, the traffic calming is gonna be an investment that's gonna have to be made. So the traffic committee can recommend that it goes forward, the, uh, complete streets committee can try to recommend how it's gonna happen and identify how, when and how that ma- may look.
So the process, just to paraphrase, the process would be to start at the traffic committee. Um, and then they would take it to either be an approval or deny and then go or, or a pass off to complete streets or just so, you know, I and, and all the residents know where to start, you know, because that's one of the things, you know, that's real frustrating when you go to City Hall, you have no idea where to start.
Sure. So, yeah, for traffic, uh, calming, for, for stop signs, for requests, for, uh, any kind of traffic measure would start at the traffic committee from their go-to complete streets.
Thank you.
Alderman Went?
Thank you, Your Honor. And, and this policy does have a traffic calming component. And so it does have some criteria and, and different things that aren't only the book that we've always been told for the last, uh, six years that I've been told that it doesn't have the warrants in the book, it doesn't matter. Well, we, we've included other, uh, resources that can be used to make the determination. So that should really help, um, uh, being flexible and not necessarily just following, you know, what, you know, the, the engineering gods said was the way to do it back in the eighties. Uh, it, it now takes into, uh, account what modern practices are, uh, what, uh, modern, um, um, studies have found and, uh, alternatives, uh, that can be, uh, beneficial. The other thing I do wanna say is to Alderman Potter's, uh, um, question. Underneath the performance measures and, and as Joe alluded to, uh, something, there will be a report that is given to council um, during, uh, council meeting each July. And in there, it talks about the number of new curb ramps installed in the public right-of-way, uh, crosswatts and curb, uh, bump out added, a linear feat of new and improved sidewalks. All of those things will be included in it because you're right, Alderman Potter. I mean, we, we, we have, we have done policies, we, uh, pass budgets, we, uh, award contracts, but we, we never know, you know, uh, wh- wh- what, what the end result is. I mean, I, staff does a great job. They, they build the things out. But, you know, gun to our head if we said, you know, how, how many linear feats of, uh, new sidewalk were, were installed? W- we really had no idea. This is one of those things that will help us. And then by getting that report back in July, it can then help us make some determinations when we're doing our budgeting in through October and November. Are we spending enough? What are we doing? What do we want to maybe move things? We're, we're making big progress here, but here's an area that we may, uh, may to, uh, uh, to enhance or, or focus on this year. And so I think that, uh, having this in the reporting, uh, uh, amount will not only improve our streets, uh, and everything, but then eventually improve our budgeting process, uh, on the heels of that reporting.
Any other comments or questions? Joe, I have a question for you. Does the, um, just for calling a policy, does the policy have a component of education, community education in it?
No, I don't think there's anything specifically written in here to educate community, um, but it would be one of those things where when we're gonna do anything in an area, in a neighborhood, as, as part of our, uh, design and pre-construction, we would wanna get out there and let them know that there might be some changes that they're not accustomed to. We're not just gonna build this road back curb to curb. We're gonna add these things. So there would be some community outreach uh, prior to the construction project beginning, uh, but there's, there's not really an element in here for ongoing, uh, outreach to.
So, and, and I appreciate what a great job the engineering department has historically done with the support of Public Works, um, to communicate to the neighbors that are directly impacted by the construction, but I was thinking more of a bigger picture for the community itself. I get calls about, you know, why did you go from two lanes to three? What's happening there? And they're always interested, you know, it just seems quite outrageous until they understand that it's an effort to calm traffic and improve safety. Um, and so I think it would be nice to use some of our paid funds to help support that communication if, you know, we don't have to create, um, video content, but just share video content or do, um, some things on Facebook just to help the community understand what some of those features are, um, you know, designed and scientifically proven to help with. I, I would really like to see something like that.
I think that'd be pretty, pretty easy to work with you guys on that because there, there's a lot of information out there. The slides I had were, were presented to us. There's, uh, there's a big alliance for this push within our urban, um, development. So there's a lot of information out there. We could, we could certainly help with, uh, with the community outreach as far as that goes.
I'd appreciate that because I get the questions from the people that are bold enough to ask. There's a lot of other people that I'm sure would be interested in understanding as well.
Sure.
So are there any other comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call please.
Alderman Waldron.
Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Potter.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
Skoomaker.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. The next item will be presented by Tony Lodi, our director of utilities. It's a hiring, uh, environmental manager.
Yes, Your Honor, this item is, authorizes an exception to the hiring moratorium to, uh, fill the vacant, uh, environmental manager position. As you know, the environmental manager, uh, manages the broad aspects of the storm utility. Uh, we've made some changes to the job description to also include some, um, WPC, uh, related duties. There would be corresponding, um, WPC funding for that as well. Uh, we, um, this position's been vacant for a year and, uh, we've, uh, tried to get our arms around what, uh, exactly is needed, uh, within the storm utility and, and, uh, we've moved forward at this point to, uh, fill the position. Staff recommends proceeding.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Berg and we have a second by Alderman Williams. Is there any discussion on this item? Roll call please.
Alderman Waldron.
Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Potter.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
Skoomaker.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion carries. Tony has another hiring recommendation. It's for utilities, field workers.
Yes, Your Honor, in our water pollution control sewer maintenance area, uh, Alderman Waldron would remember a time when we had, uh, entry-level employees that partnered with our, uh, the, the collections technicians to, uh, do the work to maintain the sewers and we're, uh, uh, looking to turn the clock back at, uh, per se and add some entry-level employees back into that area. We currently have one, uh, permanent vacancy and one temporary vacancy in this sewer maintenance area. Staff is recommended, recommending proceeding to fill those with, uh, a modified job description from that, uh, entry-level position from, uh, years ago. Uh, to fill one permanent position and one temporary position. We have a, a person that, uh, is off work for an extended period of times. Uh, staff recommends proceeding with these two positions.
Motion approved.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Berg and a second by Alderman Waldron. Is there any discussion on this, this item? Hearing none, roll call please.
Alderman Waldron.
Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Potter.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
Skoomaker.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion carries. Thank you, Tony. The next item will be presented by Dirk Price, Corporation Counsel. It is item number sixteen, Amendment to Chapter Four, alcoholic liquor of the Molling Code of Ordinances, license fees.
Good evening, Mayor, uh, members of council. Uh, thank you. So this item before you concerns the manner in which we deal with applications for new, uh, liquor licenses and the good news is we have, uh, people applying for them. Uh, but the cost of doing the investigation for a new applicant has gone through the roof, particularly on the policing side for criminal background checks. Uh, the Illinois State Police charge now for, uh, fingerprint checks, uh, and so forth is, uh, skyrocketed. And so our current procedure was we have a three thousand dollar application fee if you're new to the process, but you don't pay it until we determine you're eligible. And in some instances, um, rare, but still sufficient to cause us some concern, that means people went through all the process, we spent all the money and there is no payment of the three thousand dollars or any part of covering the cost. So, uh, liquor licenses, you don't have a limit on the number of them, but a small entry barrier to get people who are serious about it and not looking to cut every corner is appropriate. So what we're suggesting now is a change, uh, after talking to the deputy clerk and our liquor commissioner, uh, and to Chief Galt. It's the three thousand gets paid upfront if you're determined not to be, uh, eligible and that happens because people don't always understand Illinois liquor laws. Uh, or they can't find somebody to be the manager who's a resident. You'll get everything back but the two hundred and fifty bucks, which we need to cover costs. We've drilled down typical Carol Barnes and Chief Galt, they drilled down to the penny. And two fifty is about what we need to cover our real costs in getting people through the eligibility process. And so that's the change is you'll pay your full three thousand and in those rare cases where you're not eligible, you get everything back except two fifty. That's to cover our actual.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Berg and a second by Alderman Moyer. Is there any discussion on this item? Roll call please.
Alderman Waldron.
Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Potter.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
Skoomaker.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion carries. The next item is item number seventeen, Amendment to Chapter Three, Advertising in Signs and Chapter Twenty, Motor Vehicles and Traffic of the Molling Code of Ordinances, soliciting, soliciting on the roadway.
So if I have another, uh, I, I would say another twenty-four months, uh, with Chief Galt like I've had this last month, he's gonna become a lawyer and you're gonna lose him as the chief of police. Uh, this ordinance before you is about people soliciting in the road. Uh, recently, there was a, uh, Illinois Supreme Court case that struck down almost all of the ordinances that are on the books now. Uh, because we home rule municipal attorneys, talk to each other, we try to develop best practices. And the new rule, according And the new rule according to the Illinois Supreme Court is it's all or nothing. And we're all familiar with the, the fireman and the boot in the middle and that's laudable and we're always going to want that to happen, but that means we're going to have to deal with everybody else. So the Home Rule Committee got together, we've tried to figure out what we can do. I have to be cognizant in Moline of the fact that you have a history with the ACLU about this. We've had instances reported by Alderman to us about folks who were impeding the flow of traffic or creating safety hazards. What we're able to do is shift a little more burden back to the police department, to the beat officer, who has to make a determination about whether somebody's impeding traffic as opposed to a bright line rule about permits and dates and times. But this is as safe as we can make the roads for our, our traveling public. People who have reached out to the chief and complained about instances where their student drivers have been confronted and felt unsafe. So this is about as much as we can do under the current state of Illinois law, absent legislative change. There are a couple of bills to change the legislation, but they're not going anywhere at the moment. That's not high on anybody's agenda. So we're moving, we recommend approval of this change to our ordinance to handle advertising signs and solicitation in the roadway to make them as safe as we can make them at the moment.
Motion approved.
Second. We have a motion by Alderman Potter and a second by Alderman Moyer. Is there any discussion on this item? Sorry? I don't sound like Alderman Moyer. Alderman Moyer, did you second that?
We were, we came at the same time.
I heard her say. You can have the next one though, you said you were a little faster. Okay. Any discussion on this item? Roll call please.
Alderman Waldron.
Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Potter.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
Scoonmaker.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion carries. The next item is item 18.
Can I ask a question, Mayor?
Certainly.
So does that include if you're sitting on 23rd Avenue with the sign, just asking for money?
Yes, you're, you're, you don't have to be just in the roadway, you can be on the side of the road. And yes, that, that, that is a First Amendment activity.
Okay. So they do apply for a license or they just can do it?
They can do it.
Okay.
But they can't impede that.
Okay, got you, thank you.
Next item?
Yes. Legal Services Agreement PFAS Contamination.
So the, as Tony Lodi has reported here to the council previously, the IPA is, and the nation is struggling with this next thing called polyfluor- or perfluor-alkyl chemicals, which have been found in waterways. They're manmade chemicals, they've been around since the late 30s, 1930s, and they aren't going anywhere. They don't break down, they're in our systems, they're in each of us. They've been around and, but at certain levels in drinking water, they've been determined to pose, pose a threat. We don't know what that precise level is yet. IPA and the United States are struggling to determine what the appropriate level is. But we are aware and testing, we've now tested for it, we've been tested for it by the state. We're aware of it. Tony's been working on it to make sure that our water is safe. We've sent out a disclosure to everybody in the water bill about it. And in terms of what can or can't be done, we've talked about that whatever the solutions are going to be going forward to, to take care of this and make sure that we're properly diluting our water to whatever an acceptable level is. And at the moment, it's acceptable. Our, our water is, is at the moment deemed safe. But as we discover more about these chemicals and we want to have fewer parts per trillion, there might be other solutions. That's a cost. And a cost to the city of Moline that it did not incur in itself. It's a result of other processes. People have made money creating this chemical. It's been useful. It's in Teflon, it's in fire retardant materials to help our, our fire service. But the people who made the money ought to bear the burden. And that's what this mass tort litigation is about. We are joining other river towns in this litigation. And before you is the retainer for the national firm featured in a, a national movie for which Mark Ruffalo won critical acclaim called Dark Water. This firm is the one that's pursuing recoveries for communities like Moline where they're going to be burdened trying to keep their water as safe as possible regardless of whatever the science calls for in the future. And that the people who had the benefit of this chemical also now bear the burden of it. And so we're recommending that we join through this retainer agreement to recover the costs for the city of Moline.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Berg and a second by Alderman Moyer. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none, roll call please.
Alderman Waldron.
Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Moyer. I'm sorry, Williams.
Aye.
Did I do that to you guys before? Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Potter.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
Scoonmaker.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion carries. The last item for Dirk this evening is item 19, Lease Extension with Beeler Family Trust.
Believe it or not, this is another lease matter in an odd way. We have two leases with the Beeler Family Trust. One has the shooting range and we use the farm for other things. And then we have a second agricultural lease, which we sublease to a farmer. It came to our attention that this lease, the non-shooting range lease, had expired because the farmer drove through a gate trying to get the crops because he was frustrated. He didn't know who he was supposed to send payments to. And in the course of investigating the crash through the gate, Captain Johnson determined that we have two leases and one had expired. So I've talked to the Beeler Family Trust. We figured out why this didn't show up in any of the legal department's tickler files. So Amy and I have fixed that. And, but we need to extend the lease. The Beeler family is happy to extend it with us. This will sync it up with the lease for the gun range. And so we remove, we're recommending approval of the resolution to, to the second extension to this lease with the Beeler Family Trust.
Motion approved.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Berg and I'm sorry, I didn't hear the second.
Went.
Alderman Went made the second. Is there any discussion on this item? Roll call.
Alderman Waldron.
Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Parker. Went.
Aye.
Potter.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
Scoonmaker.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion carries. And now we'll go to the other, Tony is presenting this evening.
Yes, Your Honor, utilities staff's been in contact with a property owner, David Ramos. He's the owner of 3706 Ninth Avenue. He was given the, the connection information. He may or may not be on the line in case you have a question for him. But he owns the property at 3706 Ninth Avenue. And the, he's been told that the septic system there is failing. And, and he's inquired with us about the potential to rebuild that septic system. The code requires him to connect to city sewer, which brings us here today. So staff at this point is recommending to grant this variance to allow him to restore his septic system with the caveat that when, at such time when a public gravity sewer becomes available to him or to this property, that, that they'd be required to connect at that time. There are a number of different options for him to connect, ranging in price from 27,000 all the way up into the mid 50,000s. His single price that he has, he's seeking additional quotes, is about $9,500. Staff recommends proceeding with the, the variance as I mentioned.
Motion approved.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Berg and a second by Alderman Moyer. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none, roll call please.
Alderman Waldron.
Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Went.
Alderman Waldron, I am so proud of you. Aye.
Potter.
I voted for him.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
Scoonmaker.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
I know, that's like a plus unanimous decision.
Wow.
That motion carries. And I don't know why we teased you. You're our expert. Okay. We're moving on to our informational items. The first one will be presented by Darren Galt, our Chief of Police. It is a downtown camera system.
Well, good evening. Does anyone need a desk yoga break, a small beverage? The police people run to get, or I'm sorry, the fire team will run to get you any beverages that you need if you're feeling a little sneaky.
You just need a brief informational if you don't mind.
I'll try to be, I'll try to be brief. So in 2019, the police department started to explore some improved video surveillance to enhance public safety in the city of Moline. That ended up obviously being put on hold because of the pandemic that we went through in 2020. But we had engaged Motorola in their sub corporation, Vigilon, to try to explore some unique ways to enhance public safety in the city. And we have re-engaged since COVID has started to give us some brief windows into back to normal. And so I'm proud to bring forward this informational to you, to bring you up to date on that and talk some specifics tonight. Also on the line tonight have Dominic Starelli, who is the Senior Account Manager with Motorola Solutions, and Chris Jensen, who is the Vigilon Regional Sales Manager, if you have any questions that exceed my expertise in this matter. I'd also like to thank and acknowledge on the line tonight Captain Brian Johnson and Sergeant Nate Menninger. Specifically Sergeant Menninger, who's done in the last three months, I think, has done a large amount of work to put this together for us tonight. And ultimately, our goal here is to enhance public safety, make that a great place to live, work, and visit. So video surveillance is widely accepted and is around everywhere, right? We're on it today. Body cameras, video in stores here at the city council. And ultimately, the effects of video surveillance in municipalities can deter petty crimes, harassment, vandalism, auto theft, and violent crime. Can provide an unbiased picture of public behavior and increase the public sense of safety. Can also improve evidence for investigation and prosecution of crimes. Really, video is the future of policing and the public has started to demand, and I in fact expect, video evidence as you see on a daily basis on either social media or mainstream media. You know, and I also tie it back into if we're going to get into this public art project, for me to continue to protect public art, video surveillance may also be the way. But I've also talked to many of you, the elected officials that have different concerns about different things in the city that might also be enhanced by video surveillance, such as our parks. And as I said, the video cameras are very popular throughout the United States. Private ringing doorbells, private videos, home security systems. And even in, in our restaurants, our malls, our schools, our office buildings and arenas. Tax Layer Center, as an example, is a Vigilon customer and has over 100 of these video products in their arena just across the street. And the research shows that it is effective. In 2013, our, published in the Criminal Justice Review, examined a medium sized city similar to us, about 66,000, assessed camera impacts on public safety. And that study found that cameras had effects on crime, inconsistent effects on disorder and that the visibility of cameras was a factor on behavior. Then 2018 study published in the Journal of Crime and Justice showed that about 49% of local police departments in the United States are using video surveillance and the cameras were effective in reducing things like auto theft and also an effective strategy when paired with other leasing strategies. However, let's be realistic. Cameras are not a physical barrier. They're not going to make an object harder to steal or a person harder to rob. They are valuable video evidence. So I'm going to show you a, a sample here and you'll quickly figure out this is, is not Moline. But it is a downtown district. It is dark video and this is one of Vigilon's products that they have mounted here. This is a stationary camera. This is video that's recorded. And we can zoom in on this vehicle, give it a second. And we can get the license plate off of that, off of that video. I told David that I would bring a wired mouse. I did. It's in my backpack, over on my chair that I forgot to look up here. So you'll now have to forgive me while I manually zoom this back out. But we can also, thank you. We can also see on this video. It's like the, this is, this works, you know, it always works when you demo it at home, not when you are on the stage presented. I will, I will come back to this. So I'm going to show you, there's a gentleman dining at their outdoor cafe on the right, in a white shirt, minding his own business, enjoying the downtown district. And we can zoom in on there and see that he has a cell phone here on the table. And this gentleman here is going to take advantage of this gentleman's inattention to his cell phone and he's going to steal that off the table. So as this, as this plays and you can watch that, you can see how we could use this from an investigative standpoint, a police department standpoint to investigate crimes, improve both investigatory leads off of video as well as provide crucial video evidence to later prosecute a crime. And, and this is really something that could enhance our areas in the downtown and throughout the city to provide this needed unbiased picture of public behavior. And so you see this gentleman come along here and just grab his cell phone as this individual is not paying attention. Of course, we could pause this video and zoom in onto his face and use that for prosecution. So as I mentioned, Vigilon is the, is the company here that we've been working very closely with to provide a unique video surveillance system and a unique video analysis product that is effective security solutions. So about the past 18 months, they've worked very hard to analyze our city, helped us develop a scalable project proposal to add cameras throughout the city in about six phases. I emailed that out to you today. We'll briefly go over it, but you can look at it and digest it later. But one of the features of Vigilon is they have a significant software system that will barely save us time. We're going to have over 100 cameras in the city. Going through that video will be very difficult. And they have a solution for that. We're not going to go into that today, but it is extremely powerful and will be very beneficial for staff time to manage this. So the proposal is to eventually have video surveillance points throughout the city. And here on this Google map, you can see that this shows some different phases of the city that we would implement in there and targeting our, our schools, our parks, some high accident intersections, and then of course, our downtown in this area here that we have identified as our Phase One project. And so in this downtown project, we're proposing to put 15 cameras downtown from the Mercado Plaza to Bass Street Landing and all along Fifth Avenue. And the green shaded areas show the coverage of the cameras. And you can tell that they are focused on public, roadways, sidewalks, public spaces like the Bass Street Landing or the Mercado Plazas. They're not pointed at specific businesses, but they're the public spaces. The proposal in this phase also includes cameras on our mobile trailer that should be coming here soon. And it also includes a software takeover of existing police department cameras and new cameras in our interrogation rooms at the police department that we, that need to be updated. We are required by laws, record certain offenses. And those cameras are pretty dated. We have some problems with them and spent some money on them and it's not working out. So this would also incorporate those, put it all on one platform. We want to enhance public safety in the heart of our city. The other thing is that we, we know through this scalable project that we'll eventually need to provide more data space. And Vigilon has analyzed that and we're prepared for that. And so of our other phases that I showed you in this overall master plan here are And so of our other phases that I showed you in this overall master plan here are going to be dependent on our uh, citywide broadband infrastructure plan. And so as you are doing RFPs for the broadband infrastructure plan, it was important for us to work on this project alongside that. So we were prepared and could also provide that data to the city engineers as you go through that. So we know where we need to have internet access. We know that some of these project locations today are not viable because there is not broadband in those areas. Um, so the uh, downtown phase here is a, has fifteen cameras downtown and one additional one at a high accident intersection, Twenty-third Street, Sixth Avenue. Uh, and it would give us sixteen uh, positions and some of those cameras have multiple, or some of those positions have multiple cameras in the globe. But we get a sixty-four camera views and that total is a hundred and ninety-seven thousand five fifty-five eighty. Now, the important thing to note here is this project does not incur ongoing fees. So the uh, the difference between price and cost may be a very important uh, factor here. And some uh, products, we have ongoing fees in this. This is a, a hardware-based uh, installation that will be local. And once we buy that, uh, we'd be ready to go and would not have an annual maintenance fee or anything like that. The, this phase, phase one is shovel-ready and ready to go. There is fiber available for us to tap into and that they have a point-to-point solution for the ones that are not at fiber. Uh, so this is a shovel-ready project uh, as we talk today. Our phase two would focus on our ingress and egress locations in the city. We've identified all of those intersections uh, that we feel are high priority to have um, video surveillance coverage. Phase three would target uh, some of our retail corridors. So for example, Walmart in Lowe's has uh, one, one, one or two ways in and out of that location. Target, uh, South Park Mall, uh, limited ingress and egress access. And so we'd like to uh, cover those areas. Those are very important for economics of the city. Uh, we have a, a section here for the school phase. We've obviously had some issues in our crossings uh, before. And so there's uh, locations here that also include Western Illinois University and C, not just our public uh, schools, but uh, you can see those here. And of course, these are scalable inside the project as well. We wanted to scale up and do more locations in any of those areas. You can see it's about fifty-seven hundred dollars per location. So, you know, we easily know if we need to scale this up or down, uh, how that would affect the cost. And then of course, our parks. Uh, we know that our parks are, are very heavily used in the city of Moline and we entertain um, a lot of uh, Green Valley baseball, softball, complex uh, events. Uh, we, we entertain a lot of children. I can tell you, uh, prior to my arrival here in another jurisdiction, there was a significant incident in uh, in a park uh, where a child was injured, where video surveillance would have been a, a great asset to try to investigate and solve that crime. So we feel that uh, video surveillance in the park areas would be very beneficial. And then a final phase, uh, adding enhancement to our roadway intersections that we've identified as high priority. And so the total cost of this project uh, would be seven hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars. Let's just make it eight hundred thousand for easy math. Would give us a total of a hundred and twenty-one camera positions with about four hundred and eighty-four cameras total. Uh, again, some of those would be uh, uh, subject to the broadband installation. There's another line on there that we had also investigated uh, for license plate readers of eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars. We're not recommending that at this time to be considered, uh, just partly because of the expense and uh, the, the second um, camera that we would need to put up in a lot of those locations and maybe the technology can catch up to it. But if that was the preference of the council, that cost would bring the total package to one point six million. So um, certainly entertain any questions that you have. And again, like I said, I have a great team uh, that's also on, online on the call. And I, I, I don't know if uh, Dominic or Chris wants to pop on and uh, and give any com- brief comments um, uh, before taking any questions.
No, I just want to say I appreciate the opportunity to support you on this project. Um, you know, if you guys have any questions, you know, feel free to uh, feel free to ask uh, yourself or Chris. But really, I think, you know, to what Chief Callum mentioned was uh, you know, this is kind of a force multiplier and, you know, what we're seeing in a lot of cities uh, between, you know, kind of that force multiplier for um, for the, for public safety, but also you're starting, we're starting to have a lot of discussions with public-private partnerships. So if there's any businesses that, you know, have had, let's say, incidents of theft or robbery, et cetera, that they want to have the ability to do sharing a video, uh, you know, a lot of the video programmers today are similar to how you might want to connect your iPad or your iPhone on the Wi-Fi hotspot. It's an open standard called ONVIF, which we're also compliant with. So if there's uh, different businesses that potentially want to share video, it's a platform that could kind of adapt. And I think one other thing that Chief Callum mentioned, um, Tax Layer as well as, I believe uh, one other significant building uh, within Moline are actually using the new Vigilon platform today. So it has kind of the ability to scale out pretty quickly from a licensing perspective as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Williams, did you have a question?
Um, a, a comment and a question. Um, good job recognizing Sergeant Mettinger and putting, tasking him on this. Uh, he's obviously one of the best. Um, how do you foresee this in the future? Are these cameras static or do you have, will all the cameras be in, in one location where they could be monitored by an officer down the road as they grow? Would there be like a, you know, camera cop that just kind of monitors all this and, and actively in real time use them? Or is this just something that, uh, information to be retrieved? How do you see this growing?
Well, I, I, I would answer that in two parts. I see right now that this is probably a retrieval method that we wouldn't necessarily monitor uh, on a general basis, but certainly big event at Bass Street uh, bringing in thousands of people down there may be a, a concern. Certainly that would be a tactical operations decision that we might employ. Uh, but I think in a general, we would not be monitoring them on a daily basis to be infringing on just regular activities by the public. Um, so then we would be, we would be looking at it from a retrieval and investigative standpoint. Uh, second, when your question was, where do I see this growing? I really think the sky's the limit. Uh, you know, we worked with Vigilon to try to keep this somewhat in, you know, uh, the cost uh, to be reasonable while we could cover as much space as possible in the city. They have unbelievable technology. Uh, they have other cameras that could be added to this. Of course, the more features on a camera, so example, like the larger four K or sixteen megapixel cameras are more expensive, twice the expense as an eight megapixel or pan tilt zoom. Uh, and so that uh, I think just escalates the cost. But if we are able to identify those funding sources, I think we'd be open to that. Uh, monitoring them on a twenty-four seven would probably be very difficult, if not impossible. Partly, as you know, we, we just don't have that staff. Uh, but, you know, we, we probably would be able to get um, live access to it on a case-by-case basis if that brought it itself uh, as, as, as an advantage to that tactical situation. The Quadsy Marathon, the Bass Street, something like that.
Alderman Williams.
Do you envision that uh, like a patrol officer would be able to tap into this also? Is it available like that or is it just uh, to, back to one location?
So you got me. And that's why I have these two fine kind of gentlemen online. So maybe Chris uh, from Vigilon could answer that question on uh, on a live portal uh, for the uh, for the officer, Chris or Dominic.
Uh, yeah, so our kit is available uh, to be pulled up over a mobile connection. So um, we have a mobile app. Uh, the cameras could be pulled up on a, on a smartphone. They can be pulled up on a tablet or a uh, laptop. So a lot of it is just how you're going to utilize the cameras. Uh, some police departments utilize them. If there's a nine-one-one call, either in, in communications or in, in uh, a supervisor's car to get eyes on a situation before a police officer uh, goes into that area. Uh, other, other jurisdictions will use it. If a, a beat officer is on the street and uh, he knows he has a, uh, an issue uh, within a certain uh, uh, geolocation, he can sit down the street, pull that camera up and access his mirrors um, to see what's going on in the neighborhood. So it's, it's basically limitless. Uh, the chief was saying that both Tax Layer Center and Moline Airport, um, whether it's the Quadsy Airport uh, currently use Vigilon. And that's one of the things you can also do is start adding those systems at no cost to this system. So you have eyes uh, on critical infrastructure, uh, being your, your event center and, and your, and your local airport.
Yeah, one other thing I'd just like to point out is that we, we're not the only city that uh, would employ uh, such, such technology. Our neighbors in Rock Island already have fifteen cameras in their downtown area. Different technology, different company. I, I believe this is better. Technology, uh, the connection, the uh, the video feed will be uh, much more advantageous for us. The way that their technology feeds in is, I'm, I'm not going to try to explain that, but it, it's a better, more reliable live feed. Uh, and then Beddorf has them throughout their city, but their, their city has broadband almost everywhere uh, throughout their city. So um, you know, locally, there's, there's quite a bit of uh, use of video surveillance. Chicago has thirty thousand plus camera locations. So uh, wide variety of political philosophy in jurisdictions as well as size of communities. So it's uh, pretty readily, readily employed by municipalities.
Alderman Moyer.
Uh, I have, thank you. I have a couple of quick questions. Um, first, what, what is the uh, the, the lifespan of these, the expected lifespan? And then can you address the security? Like, can these things be hacked or um, how do we protect the information that we're getting from those who might misuse it?
I'm going to let Chris uh, take that, those two questions both to be best answered.
Absolutely, Chief. Uh, so first of all, all of Vigil, all of Vigilon cameras and our uh, recording servers all come with a five-year warranty out of the box. That's industry-leading. Uh, that's one of our value propositions is uh, if, if uh, Moline uh, does deploy our cameras, uh, we will cover any of those cameras that are defective uh, for five, five years without any additional cost uh, coming out of uh, the city's pockets. Um, beyond that, it's just like any other technology, you know, tech refreshes uh, can be anywhere from three to five to seven years. Uh, normally, we see uh, more um, lifespan in the camera, obviously, than we do a uh, a server with spinning hard drives. Um, but uh, you know, the bigger thing with the cameras is just the technology uh, that, that keeps marching on as you uh, grow your system and grow its capabilities and what you uh, want it to be able to do. Uh, that's when you start maybe looking at replacing some of the, the cameras. But I, I would add though, um, all our cameras are made here in the United States, uh, down in Texas. So if uh, a camera did fail, uh, getting a replacement is driving it up to I thirty-five. It's not coming over on a, on a boat from overseas to, to get here.
Uh, one other thing about the technology itself, the hardware, one thing about Vigilon's product is uh, the analytics are on the camera, not the server. So a little bit different for some other products. Um, so again, as you saw, the clock, like we need to swap out one camera. If the analytics went bad in that camera, it wouldn't, you know, ruin the whole system. So it's made advantage there. Chris, could you just talk about the uh, safety of the video feed? Uh, I think Alderman Moyer asked about hacking.
Absolutely. Sorry about that. Uh, forgot question two. Um, the, so number one, we can encrypt the, the, the uh, video streams themselves coming across the network. Um, beyond that, uh, the uh, someone hacking into the system, it, it's uh, based upon your uh, network security, right? So if we do encrypt uh, the streams coming in, even if they hack into it, uh, that's, that, that's pretty rugged encryption technology that, that we have both uh, in the cameras and in our servers. Uh, there's a federal standard called FIPS uh, one forty. Uh, and, and that's something that the, the Department of Defense requires uh, before a vendor can sell to them. And we are FIPS compliant. So uh, the best uh, encryption that, that is out there, we have built into the cameras and into our servers.
Alderman Parker.
Chief, I think uh, from your previous um, slide, it was a hundred and ninety-seven thousand for the downtown, or downtown Moline area. Is that right?
That's correct, Alderman.
Is that installed and ready to use or is that just uh, box shipped and dropped off at the police department?
That is installed. So Vigilon uh, uh, has regional dealers. This, this dealer is uh, in Conex out of Cedar Rapids, and they've given us an installation price. So that is, that's the full package to.
So the installation and the hardware um, total for the cameras described totals out to one ninety-seven?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Alderman Moyer.
I have two more questions. Thank you. Um, the license plate reader, you, you mentioned that was extra, but during the demo, you were able to, to dial in. Now that's something you'd still be able to do. You'd still be able to visually read it.
Yeah, so license plate readers, just real briefly, they basically take snapshots of uh, license plates and running them through the Secretary of State database. It's uh, that's allowed by state law. They download it, a, a hot file, runs it through there and it's going to send an alert to a, an officer that X uh, license plate that was stolen just drove through an area. Um, so um, different, kind of a different situation. The video that I showed you is just static video that we were able to zoom in on and get that license plate. And then we do our regular investigation to them there.
That's good. And then, and then the other question I had was um, as more of a statement, I guess, just in uh, in terms of, you know, you look at the cost of it, but then you look at uh, the cost of doing police work and, and the cost of um, you know, this might be able to save quite a bit. You know, I think of situations where you have maybe somebody downtown that you're looking for. And we witnessed recently um, officers searching for an individual. This is the sort of thing that would potentially make that a lot, I assume, quicker if you were able to pull up a video and to determine where an individual's moving.
Absolutely. So our investigative team uses video all the time. And one of the things that really bogs down time is searching the video. Uh, we recently had a case where I had a detective sitting at a desk for forty hours, searching video. Uh, ended up being able to, to solve the crime and, and close the case. But with that said, in, in Vigilon's technology, you're able to search people or vehicles. Uh, it highlights movement, people and, and cars. Very amazing. And that would cut down on that time. So uh, in my opinion, I think that uh, that, that's uh, really a game changer in video analytics.
Right, right.
Anything else?
Uh, finally, I did employ our good friend Jeff Manis to uh, kind of do some survey of the downtown area. It was uh, generally received very positively uh, from a wide variety of our business customers. So I think this has uh, some, some uh, great benefits to the city of Moline.
Thank you so much, Chief. I appreciate it. The next information we have is the same thing. It's the administrator's update.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Thank you. Um, I want to give an update on the broadband uh, RFP. Uh, the city has uh, received proposals or received proposals from three vendors in response to our invitation for a request for proposal. Two of the three addressed our requirements, albeit in different ways. Um, and it's the intention of staff, based on those proposals, to negotiate an agreement with Geneseo Communications. So we believe that uh, they are in the best position to provide the type of robust uh, broadband fiber optic system at the one G level, uh, that would provide all households access to the high-speed broadband system. So legal counsel and I will be setting up a meeting in the next week uh, to meet with GCI and begin the discussions for how we might proceed with this project. That ties in with these chief's camera system and, and some of the other needs that we might be looking at. So any questions on, on that?
Alderman Lynn.
Um, as, as we start to, to negotiate them, with them and, and talk about the, the uh, installation, obviously, of the fibers throughout the city, they're going to be installing conduit, uh, obviously, because the fiber's going to go in through the conduit. Is there anything within it or discussion that, you know, sort of like what West Des Moines did, um, putting the conduit in? Um, typically, you, you can install conduits that's large enough to not only accommodate their fiber, but other fiber or other utility stuff that can go through it. Is, has that been discussed or? Apparently it has, and Dirk's got the mic.
Right. So we looked at the West Des Moines model. The West Des Moines model was they built the conduit system and then they lease it up. That's how they pay themselves back. So they bonded thirty-six million dollars to uh, build the structure. They also had a head start, Alderman Lynn. Um, unlike Moline, for the ten years in, in advance of them actually bonding the thirty-six million, they were putting what was called dark conduit or shadow conduit. in with every replacement sewer and water line they put in. So they had conduits sitting in ditches empty that they were able to utilize as part of it. So our cost would be at thirty-six million or more, because, uh, Laura has initiated a shadow conduit program, but we don't have that many. We, we do know of a few, like JD talked about the one that went under John Deere Road, and we've got some cost savings there. But we don't have nearly the shadow conduit West Des Moines did to start. Uh, and that, we're not going to own the system. Geneseo is gonna own the system. That was critical to this. We didn't want to float the debt. We wanted them to pay for it while there's, um, we're looking to incentivize operations with, uh, when they light a part of the community, we might incentivize that to close the gap. We recognize there's such a gap. But the, uh, in terms of owning it, because they're installing it and they're paying for it, and we're not giving them an incentive on installation, um, that's why we're not, you know, asking for a lot of conduit, extra conduit for ourselves. We're asking for conduit for things like Chief System, uh, and we're building in a little bit for, um, we've talked about the different technology that's on traffic standards, traffic lights. Um, but other than that, we're not creating a, a broader capacity.
Alderman Went.
I, I would think that there's also maybe a little broader with, with, as, uh, um, for university, for, uh, pu, uh, public buildings, uh, for schools, those sorts of things. Is, is that part of this, or that'll be part of this negotiation to figure out how that all plays out?
Their design, uh, so Geneseo has several nodes already throughout the city that we intend to take advantage of in the negotiations. But certainly, the riverfront is all part of the ULI discussion and what you're intending to bring there. We need to make sure that there's a ton of capacity. We, we already added a little bit of capacity just to deal with, for example, the Quad City Marathon. We added electric capacity and some IT infrastructure with Geneseo there. So we're aware that, uh, our needs as a municipality will go hand in hand with getting service in front of every house.
Thank you. I appreciate your work on that.
All right. Uh, and the second thing I want to talk about is, uh, ARP, or as we now call American Rescue Plan. Uh, Congress passed that several weeks ago. And what we know so far today is that the city of Moline is expected to get about twenty million dollars. So, um, it could be used for a wide variety of things. Uh, everybody's keeping an eye on all the different sources, whether it's, I don't know, municipal league or federal sources to understand what kind of further guidance we're gonna receive regarding this, uh, how this money's be spent. But currently, we can, uh, what we've been told is that we can provide economic assistance to households, small businesses, non-for-profits, impacted industries such as tourism, travel, hospitality. It could be used for, uh, paying workers that are performing essential work, uh, during the emergency. Provision of government services, uh, to uphold the reduction of revenue. In other words, stop giving support to revenue loss for the city. And also cost to make investments in, uh, water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. So there's, those are the four very wide criteria that we know so far. So I asked staff and, and directors to provide a list of projects and ideas that would fall under these broad categories and criteria. And, um, you'll be receiving that here in the next day or two. We had a little formatting issue today, so I wasn't able to get that out to you ahead of this meeting. Um, but there's some really good ideas in there. And, um, I added, just for, for reference, I added up, uh, the total cost of, we did all those projects. And, uh, we're a little bit over budget. Sixty-five million dollars is what I added up. I don't, I don't think we could do all of it, but twenty million we can. So anyway, um, but at some point here in the very near future, um, I would recommend that the City Council, um, maybe we meet in a workshop session, go over those criteria, uh, and get some guidance as to how you want to invest those twenty million dollars. Um, and, and how we might use it for things like camera systems for downtown, um, and a whole host of other things. So that's all I have.
Thank you so much.
Any questions on that?
All right. Get that out. Good tomorrow.
Thank you so much. We will now turn to public comments. Is there any public comments this evening?
Yes, Your Honor, I do have one. Um, I have a public statement that, um, has actually, uh, staff has been working to address that with our interim city administrator. But, um, the residents have asked that it's still there so that there is an awareness. Um, and this is coming from Morgan Park residents, um, Chris Wolkert, Wolkertson and Stephen Sealy. And as the property owners who will lose land with the proposed bike path, we have a few questions and concerns. And there are ten that are listed. The first, is the plan still to come in fifteen feet from the street regarding eight to ten large trees to be removed on the south side for planned bike path? Will the removed trees be replaced? And a long retaining wall will be needed on the south side. Regarding zero large trees, uh, proposed to be removed from the north side for the planned bike path, a short retaining wall will need to be added on the north side. What will the material for the retaining wall be? Will it be like that on Twelfth Street and Sixth Avenue near the John Deere home? Um, ten, the power line poles will need to be moved on the south side, and thirteen on the north side. Um, who has liability for injuries from the wall and/or sidewalk? Who will maintain the sidewalk and snow removal? How will the land be purchased and annexed? And lastly, how much will our property taxes be reduced for land reduction?
Thank you. Thank you. Any other public comments this evening?
I just want to mention that I've had several conversations with the gentleman today. So I think he's, uh, so far satisfied with our response to his concerns at this point. There's a lot of engineering work to be done on that project yet, so he understands that at this point.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Um, with you.
And, oh, and Your Honor, I, I'll, I'll add to that. And, and this gets to the Complete Streets and, um, uh, CIP and, and some of the things we've been talking about is that we've been talking about, and there are a couple of alternatives that we've been looking at, um, ways that may reduce the amount of tree loss, the amount of, uh, um, retaining wall along that, those lines. And those were just conversations that happened this, this last week. So, um, it is a work in progress. And so, uh, I'm sure we'll be addressing, uh, that list of, of questions as well with the Complete Streets group.
Thank you so much. Anything else for Committee of the Whole? Hearing no further visits, I'd like to close out of the Committee of the Whole and go into the council agenda. We will beginning, we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance and Invocation this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Alderman Williams.
Present.
Parker.
Present.
Went.
Present.
Potter.
Present.
Moyer.
Present.
Scoobmaker.
Present.
Waldron.
Present.
Berg.
Present.
Your Honor, I request approval of Committee of the Whole Council and Executive Session Minutes of March sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Council and Executive Session Minutes of a special meeting on March twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one, and appointments made during Committee of the Whole on March thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. Resolutions. Council Bill ten seventy-one dash twenty twenty-one, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to implementation of the compliance engine by Breyer. Council Bill ten seventy-two dash twenty twenty-one, a resolution approving the official city of Moline zoning map for calendar year twenty twenty-one. Council Bill ten seventy-three dash twenty twenty-one, a resolution authorizing an exception to the moratorium on hiring and promotion pursuant to Resolution ten fifty-one dash twenty twenty to hire fleet and facilities coordinator. Council Bill ten seventy-four dash twenty twenty-one, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to a rental service agreement with Phelps, the Uniform Specialists Incorporated, for uniform and format rental services for a period of five years. Council Bill ten seventy-five dash twenty twenty-one, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to a contract with Langman Construction Incorporated for project number thirteen forty-six, sanitary crossing under John Deere Road, four thousand block, for the amount of one hundred and thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and thirty-five dollars. Council Bill ten seventy-six dash twenty twenty-one, a resolution authorizing an exception to the moratorium on hiring and promotion pursuant to Resolution ten fifty-one dash twenty twenty to hire a WPC plant operator. Council Bill ten seventy-seven dash twenty twenty-one, a resolution authorizing an exception to the moratorium on hiring and promotion pursuant to Resolution ten fifty-one dash twenty twenty to hire a utilities laboratory manager. This physician was formerly titled water laboratory chemist. Council Bill ten seventy-eight dash twenty twenty-one, a resolution authorizing an exception to the moratorium on hiring and promotion pursuant to Resolution ten fifty-one dash twenty twenty to fill two motor equipment operator vacancies.
Motion to approve the consent agenda, Parker. Second, Went.
We have a motion by Parker, a second by Went. Roll call, please. Alderman Waldron.
Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Potter.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
Scoobmaker.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays. That motion carries. Non-consent agenda resolutions. Council Bill ten sixty-nine dash twenty twenty-one, a resolution approving a proposed amendment, substantial amendment three, to the city of Moline's twenty nineteen annual action plan, substantial amendment two, approved by Council Bill Resolution ten sixty-seven dash twenty twenty for the purpose of program fund real, reallocation and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to a program activity set forth in the city of Moline's twenty nineteen annual action plan, substantial amendment three, upon the Department of Housing and Urban Development's approval of said amendment.
Motion to approve ten sixty-nine, twenty twenty-one, Parker. Second, Went.
We have a motion by Parker, a second by Went. Is there any discussion on this item? Alderman Went.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. Just real quick, KJ, I, I think when, when we were doing this at, uh, the Committee of the Whole, you had mentioned maybe some changes to the criteria and how this, um, uh, program is going to work for the assistance of our local businesses. Can you give us a, just a quick recap of the difference between this phase with these funds compared to the, the previous phases?
Certainly. Thank you, Alderman Went. Um, with the proposal in this amendment, the, uh, it's gonna go from five thousand to ten thousand. It's still gonna be a forgivable loan. Uh, they have a three-month compliance period versus a six-month compliance period, and they have to retain at least one job.
Alderman Went.
Um, what was there, uh, a reason that we moved from the five thousand to the ten thou? I, I just want to make sure that I understand. I mean, clearly, well, there'll be half as many people or businesses that will maybe be affected, but they'll be affected at a, a much higher level. Is, is there just, we had a number that needed the, the extra, and we've got less that need the, the smaller ones? Or what, how, what, what went into the decision of, of that, that change?
You know, some of the businesses have reached out to staff and indicated that, you know, five thousand is a very small pot of money. When you look at paying for the overhead of payroll and rent and utilities and operational costs. So, you know, we listened to their suggestion and increased it to the ten thousand, which gives us twenty-two loans in round six. Uh, currently, in round five that we started today, you're gonna have thirteen loans at five thousand. And in round four, we had nine loans at five thousand. But the people who received money in round four, as well as round five, cannot apply and get money in round ten. So we're trying to give them enough to, you know, I guess, uh, to suit their need right now instead of wanting to keep coming back for additional funds in the program.
Any other questions?
Thank you, lady.
Hearing none, roll call, please. Alderman Waldron.
Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Potter.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
Scoobmaker.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays. That motion carries. Council Bill ten seventy-nine dash twenty twenty-one, a resolution approving the voluntary extension of paid leave benefits under the Families First Coronavirus Response Act, retroactive from April first, twenty twenty-one, through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, and approving the extension of benefits for emergency responders as modified and approved in Resolution ten forty-five dash twenty twenty from April first, twenty twenty-one, through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-one.
Motion to approve ten seventy-nine, twenty twenty-one, Parker. Second, Went.
We have a motion by Alderman Parker, a second by Alderman Went. Is there any discussion on this item? Roll call, please. Alderman Waldron.
Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Potter.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
Scoobmaker.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays. That motion carries. First reading ordinances. Council Bill thirty oh four dash twenty twenty-one, an ordinance amending Chapter eleven, fire prevention and protection of the Moline Code of Ordinances by amending Section eleven dash eleven oh one F one oh seven point two point one, test and inspection records. Council Bill thirty oh five dash twenty twenty-one, an ordinance amending Chapter twenty, motor vehicles and traffic of the Moline Code of Ordinances, by amending Appendix thirty-one, snow routes. Council Bill thirty oh six dash twenty twenty-one, an ordinance amending Chapter three, advertising and signs of the Moline Code of Ordinances, Section three dash twenty one oh five, signs allowed on private property with and without permits, by repealing Table three dash twenty one oh five point one in its entirety and acting in lieu thereof one new Table thir, three dash twenty one oh five point one, relate same subject matter. And that is all I have this evening, Your Honor. Thank you so much, Jenny. Thank you. Um, let's go through our council miscellaneous business. We'll go through each council member. Alderman Williams, do you have anything to say?
We just encourage everyone in the city to get out and vote. It's an important election.
Thank you. Alderman Parker.
Yeah, I have a couple of things. First of all, I want to thank Sarah Mack and anybody that had anything to do with, um, the purchasing of local, um, equipment. Um, I remember it was several years ago, we were buying computers and it was, um, through a previous, our previous, uh, legal team. Um, the, the difference between buying local and buying, um, across the country was pennies. And we, they would not allow us to buy local. And so, um, if this was, I know Sarah had a lot to do with this, and Dirk, if you had anything to do with it, God bless you for keeping our, our tax dollars here in the city. Um, second of all, um, I am blessed in the fact that I love going to Jersey Mike's. And tomorrow, let's not forget, get your sandwich there so we can, um, support the junior achievement. And otherwise, have a good evening.
Thank you, Alderman Parker. Alderman Went.
As usual, the two things I was gonna talk about have been talked about, so thank you very much. Have a great night.
Thank you, Alderman Potter.
Uh, yes, Your Honor. Um, a short time ago, there was a obituary in the paper for, uh, uh, one of the leaders in the community, Mr. Don Morgan Taylor, former head of, uh, uh, Deer. Um, and, uh, he was instrumental in, uh, along with other, um, the loaned exec, Jay Pressler from Deer, and a bunch of other community leaders who were instrumental in the, uh, the building and the mark and much of the things that went on in that area. Um, it's a testament to the, um, people that came from, uh, from Deer and all those other places that, uh, we have, the great things that we have down there on River Drive. Appreciate all his efforts.
I'm sorry, Alderman Potter, could you tell me his name again for the record?
Don Morgan Taylor.
Thank you. Thank you, Alderman Potter. Alderman Moyer.
Hey, thank you. Uh, just real quick, I, I wanted to, um, and I might be stepping on, uh, Brian Lear. Uh, IT specialist Gregory Ford is going to be starting on, uh, I think he just started, actually, uh, maybe a week ago. And, uh, just wanted to welcome him. But also, and more importantly, uh, Bob Conklin, who I, I'm gonna butcher this. I think he served for over thirty years as our, as one of our librarians and, um, is well-known as our local, uh, local area historian. Uh, is retiring on April tenth. And so I just wanted to congratulate him and thank him for his years of service. And I'll let Brian, uh, correct any of my mistakes.
Brian, is that, is that all accurate?
Well, thank, thank you, Alderman Moyer. It's actually, uh, thirteen years for Bob Conklin instead of thirty, but, um, he, he certainly put in thirty years' worth of work during his time.
Thank you. That's really smooth. Thank you. Thank you, Alderman Moyer. Was there anything else? Um, Alderman Scoobmaker.
Nothing further, Your Honor.
Thank you. Alderman Waldron.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you. Alderman Berg.
Um, I just want to thank, uh, Tony and Joe for, uh, stepping up into these leadership positions. I know you guys are gonna make us proud and so, so happy and congratulate you guys. And to Sarah as well, I know you had a lot to go over tonight. And just thank you again, keeping our tax dollars in Moline. Sarah Mark, David Parker.
What did I say?
Sarah Mack.
You know what? I'm trying to save letters as well as dollars, so. M-A-K, we're getting rid of the R.
Okay, thank you very much. And I want to give a shout out to Leah as well. She's stepping up very nicely. It's all a very wonderfully smooth transition. I'm glad that we've got a lot of bench strength here, so thank you. Um, and then I do have one thing I wanted to give the council a heads up on. And so back in January, I received a notice from Toni McComby, and she was encouraging communities in the seventy-first district to apply for recognition at the state level. The, um, program is the Governor's Hometown Awards. Let's see. It's associated with Sturgis, Illinois, and it's focusing on projects and communities that, um, do good work with volunteerism. And so I, uh, asked for support from staff to look at, um, what, what programs would be, um, good that would represent Moline and our efforts in those areas. And I have to give credit to Dirk Price. He was the lead on that. There were a lot of people that helped support that effort of getting those very thorough, in-depth applications into the state. Um, we have an announcement to make tomorrow about, uh, awards that were given in those areas. That'll be, the announcement will take place at ten o'clock in the morning tomorrow. It'll be at Fifth Avenue and Twelfth Street. And I wanted to invite the council to join that, uh, press conference to, uh, help us celebrate with those community partners, um, and their recognition at the state level.
What time?
It's at ten AM.
Thank you.
Ten AM tomorrow at Fifth Avenue and Twelfth Street. Outdoors. Okay. So that's all I have. Um, I think that we may have some, well, let me turn it over to public comment. Was there any public comment for this session? Do any of the staff want to address the council this evening? Okay, we're gonna go into executive session then. Who's got the note?
Your Honor, I make the motion that the council convene an executive session for the purpose of discussion of deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees by the ILCS one twenty slash two C two and appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, five ILCS one twenty slash two C one.
Second.
We have a motion and, uh, a motion by Alderman Berg and a second by Alderman Moyer. Did you have some?
Yeah, I need Carol and Leah and, and part of that.
Okay, thank you. Um, roll call, please. Alderman Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Went? Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Scoobmaker?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays?